All right, you all ready for the roll call?
Please, yes, please, Madam Clerk.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Brennan?
Present.
Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Present.
Ms. Devine? Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mayor Benjamin?
I'm, I am present and, um, Madam Clerk, Ms. Devine's gonna be, uh, logging in very soon. She had a court obligation. Um, so we'll be, uh, she'll be checking in very soon. We'll mark her present when she shows up on the call. Uh, thank, thank, thank you. Um, Remiddell, you might bring us a word, brother?
Yes. Eternal and creator God for all that you've done for us. For this day, for all of the hopeful possibilities you've allowed us to share in. We gather today as brothers and sisters, shrouded in grace and mercy. We simply ask that you might be with us individually and collectively. As we discuss and decide on issues for this city. Lord, we pray that the memory of John Lewis resonate within each of us. And that the sensitivity that he gave to this nation of ours rise up among all of the obstacles. Deliver us from all that is evil and protect us. We ask it in your name, amen.
Amen. Thank, thank you, uh, Rep. for recognizing the, um, uh, the life of John Lewis. Obviously, this past week, we lost John Lewis and C.T. Vivian and, uh, early this year, Joseph Lowry. And, and today, we actually have a chance to celebrate as well the birthday of our Congressman, the eighth birthday of Jim Claver. Uh, so we're, we're, we're thankful for his years of service and that he and Congressman Lewis served together for years, even long before, uh, even one of them went to the Congress. So, uh, happy birthday, uh, Jim Claver.
Happy birthday, boss.
Happy birthday.
Amen. Amen. Um, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
I'm sorry, please, Madam Amendment.
Please. We'll amend item number five, the Microsoft agreement to simply reflect their reduction in costs to six hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Okay, super. All right, with that amendment, um, is there a motion to drop the agenda?
Uh, comment?
Please.
Um, I, uh, I, I wanna do, do this and for the record, uh, maybe it'll spark some ongoing discussions. And I've gone through, went through the agenda. And, um, one of my concern is African-American and minority participation. I looked at all of these numbers and the, the totals. Tried to figure out where the, um, proteges were in, in a number of these, uh, contracts. And it's, it's difficult to determine, number one. Um, and, and two, when I looked at the total, I guess of the total, a number of them, I just sort of not included. We're looking at somewhere around sixty-two million dollars. And the concern is, I can only identify two, uh, proteges, uh, and a, and minorities. That would be Ja- Desa, Lisa, and, and Chow.
You got all of these, um, couple of them in here, Mr. Davis. But I don't disagree with your observation. As a matter of fact, I had a conversation earlier.
Right. And so, um, and it's also, when I look at a couple of the change orders, the change orders sort of bump the cost of these contracts up also. So if you look at a sixty-million-dollar range, uh, I don't think we would be, uh, on, on the mark with what we say. Do, if you recall, I think earlier last year, there was a packet that came before us that totaled about fifty million, uh, Madam, City Manager, and then you sort of pull that back to take a look at it for some strategies to meet those goals. And, um, I, I look at one as an example only. Um, uh, uh, there's one totaling one million plus another, uh, total plus reaching its highest seventeen million, so forth and so on. If we don't have minority, minority participation in these contracts, um, I, we don't, I think we don't look good. Um, and my, my thought was to maybe pull these back so that we can get some clarity on, on participation. Also, a number of these contracts, again, based on the selection, uh, as I always say, when it's all over, um, a lot of dollars are gonna be going down interstate, leaving this city. And, and we, I want us to take, make a concerted effort to beef up our minority participation, African-Americans and, and, uh, others of color. We're the capital city and, and with that kind of money being spent, especially now where you have some of these programs, mostly you, the, um, proteges are small businesses and they're struggling now. And we all know that there's a good chance that a number of those that are struggling now won't exist at the end of this pandemic. And I'm, I'm hoping that just as the others, the big boys are getting the opportunity to stay in the game, we need to figure out a way to get more, uh, proteges involved. Um, and I think also you look at the question of whether or not we do in fact have small and minority businesses capable of doing some of this work. And if they're not, then that's one of the purposes of the protege program. So, um, I may reluctantly support this packet, but, uh, I, I do it with reservations because of my concerns. But I, I would like us to, Madam, come back and see how we plan to address these concerns.
Yes, sir. Mr. Davis, um, you know, I'm happy to go through each one of these projects with the council. I, I do wanna reassure you because I think the, the staff on the call will probably be finding this conversation interesting because when we have agenda review, I spend an inordinate amount of time. I mean, I cannot tell you the depth that we go into on every single project. And of course, because of the length of time, um, from our last council meeting, this is a pretty full agenda that I was hoping to take you all through at a steady pace. But it is a lot to it today. Many water sewer projects that unfortunately are, you know, most of which do not need to be held up. But I certainly understand wanting to discuss any questions you have. I actually was proud of many of these projects because there are several that are protege-only. And so I can assure you that the percentages for every single water sewer project, except for one, um, have been met with the goal set of twenty percent participation. And I guess I would need to have some clarity as to when you're saying they haven't been met, if you're meaning minorities of color. Because I wouldn't be, I, I, I wanna be clear for the public that we have goals. We meet them. There's a mentor protege program and the requirements of twenty percent for those mentor protege projects. I don't see one on here. We haven't met that except for one. And I can, we can talk about that one with, uh, East Rocky Branch and some capacity assurance issues that, um, have me a bit concerned. And so I had to make, um, a decision with the staff about not meeting CDBE goals and, um, some pricing concerns, et cetera, and timing issues. It's very urgent. But outside of that, I think we probably need to get into a discussion and be clear to the public on when you say we haven't met the goals. I, I don't think that's totally accurate. We met the goals, but if we are discussing availability of, um, of contractors of color, specifically, is that your concern?
That, that is, that, that is my concern. You know, we have the classifications in terms of, um, minority, which is broad, but if you break that down, the question is, my question, and the questions is out there, is minorities of color, African-Americans, as, as an example. Um, don't wanna prolong this, but I, I think this warrants some further discussion and we can, we can do that. And if I may be, uh, leaning off the shelf and not on solid grounds, and you can, you can bring that to my attention also. But moving forward, we need to figure out a way to, um, cease, to be able to have some clarity so that a person like myself, uh, won't have to dig to have, answer that question.
Okay. And I think too that it's a bigger discussion with some of our, um, opportunities for program, program participation of, um, through the Office of Business Opportunities and other economic development avenues to make sure that many of our, um, contractors of color are, have an opportunity to prepare themselves for the type of work and their, their availability to do the work on these particular projects. Again, we, we're trying to figure out ways to break down some of these high-dollar projects so that that opportunity may be there in different ways. But again, um, we, we did do protege-led projects too. On, there's several on this agenda, as a matter of fact, which is a, which is a new, novel approach as well. It comes down to the availability and the capacity. And I agree with you that we've gotta keep pushing the envelope on ways to, um, improve upon that for our, um, businesses of color in, in certain fields, particularly in the water and sewer industry.
Just, just to found a quick point and I'll let go. Um, when we look at these numbers, especially the bottom line, and, and this is just one group coming through, you know, about sixty-some odd million dollars. That's the city's cash cow, if you wanna put it like that. But also, the question that would be, um, are the people that we're contracting aware of that and, um, are they, um, looking to those out of town, hire local? And also, are they putting forth an honest effort to locate and give those groups that I'm concerned about an opportunity to participate in, in a contract?
Well, I think you raise a great point and it's something the staff and I need to push. Um, as you say, the big boys in Columbia, um, who are competing, um, and losing some projects to out-of-state contractors, we've noticed.
Right.
May not have the, uh, relationships with some of our smaller, um, SMWBEs here. But it's the market. Um, there's a lot of SCDOT work going on right now that is, um, maybe not making some of our local folks, um, as interested or as competitive. So I'm happy you raised the point because it's an opportunity for me publicly to say, step up.
Right.
Step up.
And, 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 you know, we, we just have so many all fragile.
Yes.
Businesses, uh, in, in this city. And again, fast forward to what their position's going to be when we all agree that the pandemic has passed. We know that, don't know what the numbers are, but then that's nationwide. The smaller ones are gonna, they're gonna perish. If we don't have certain, um, uh, not, not safety nets, but we don't have, if we're not aggressive in making sure that, you know, they get what they need, the training, opportunities to, to compete, participate, and, um, uh, financial assistance.
Mr. Mayor, I'll defer to you as to how you wanna approach these items individually. Obviously, they're.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest.
Happy to explain each and every one of them.
I don't, I don't think we need to do that today, but it's, I'm, I'm putting it out there because it is a, um, an example. So we need to just, we can just discuss it.
Sure, sure. I know absolutely. Well, um, given some of the realities, uh, obviously, we've been doing a lot in this space. Staff's been doing a deep dive. Obviously, economic reality is always playing all of this. Um, that might be, that might be maybe time for, um, your committee, uh, to meet Sam, spend some time in the space, seeing what exactly more we could be doing and, um, and we can make that happen. Mr. McDowell?
Yeah, well, I think, I think Daniel had it.
Go ahead, Dan.
I'm sorry. I didn't have Daniel on my screen. I apologize.
Go ahead, Daniel.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, we've had this conversation before and I think we ought to put some time because there's a challenge with some of the contractors to have graduated and take on. But at the same time, the, the.
Breaking.
You're breaking up, Daniel.
I don't, I don't see it on my side, but I hear somebody in the background, but, um, um, you know, with all that's going on, we have challenges, but there's some lot of opportunities. Repair jobs and other things that takes away the limits of insurance and bonding and the things that have been challenges from some folks that we could, that would be ongoing, will always be ongoing, that we need to make sure we get. So I, I, we need to, to, to pull the subcommittee together and dig through it because there's a lot of opportunities. They all don't have to be big projects. There's lots of money spent every day in Columbia that will add up to big numbers at the end of the year. But there's opportunities for, for our local businesses, um, minority women, everything to be involved in our city. Yes, I do think, because there are challenges with the program and we've discussed it before, but there are other. I ought to pursue them. And, um, I do think that's a, uh, uh, in this case, we, we should pull that committee together.
All right, let's, let's, uh, let's, uh, let's plan to have a committee meeting, uh, sooner rather than later. Mr. McDowell?
Yes, just, um, Ms. Wilson, let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
What's the role in terms of bringing this list, compiling this list of vendors? Is that, Liz, how, how does OBO play into that?
So.
And, and particularly with the urgent conversation I think Mr. Davis is raising. How does, is there any connectedness related to those issues? If so, can there be, can there be some collaboration and some conversation? And again, I wanna agree with Sam, and I wanna say, and I think, I think Daniel raises a real pivotal issue of that. But I think it's necessary for us, as we talk about African-American businesses and contractors, it would certainly be good for us to have that clarifying conversation. So, does OBO play a part of where we are in terms of clarification?
Yes, sir. So we're, I, I do think the conversation, to give you all a full picture in, in a committee setting, it sounds needed. Procurement staff, the Office of Business Opportunity staff, um, Clint's whole team with Columbia Water, um, they're all involved together in most of these projects on the front end as far as deciding when a project is to be bid, what goals we set, what programs are applicable, like if it's mentor protege or subcontractor outreach, et cetera. And then, of course, we have the CDBE goals that Melissa and, and Melissa, actually, the Office of Business Opportunities actually initiates, um, through a formula, the availability of, um, small minority women-owned businesses. And it's, it's like a science. It's, they actually track who's available to participate. Certain percentages are, are, um, are determined. And that is typically, I, in recent weeks, I can think of maybe one or two, um, that I've had questions about when they've done those percentages. Um, Melissa and her team do that and it's sent to, um, Assistant City Manager Shealy and Gentry. And they review it and then it's sent to me for me to sign off on as far as determining percentages and availability of, of contractor, small minority women own. I think the bigger discussion though, that I'm hearing from Mr. Davis and you all is about capacity of, um, of some of these contractors of color is, and that's why, again, I'm, I'm being very specific when I say that I don't want anyone to leave this conversation before we pass these agenda items thinking that there were no programs applied, no goals met. The twenty percent was met on almost every one of them, except for maybe one. And we can talk about that one. Um, and that was my call. So, again, I think we have to be clear about the bigger picture of building capacity of minorities, particularly minorities of color in certain, uh, disciplines and the industries that we impact through water and sewer and the market. And so it's a bigger discussion I think we need to have, Ms. Reverend McDowell. But yes, to answer your question, all of those departments worked together on every single one of these procurements, starting with Ms. Wright, who's the Director of Procurement, working with, um, Clint and Melissa specifically. And Missy, and I mean, we all work on them. I mean, I, you know, we spend an agenda review, you know, more time than I would like us to, but it's because of these questions that I know you're gonna ask. We probably spend, on this agenda, we spent probably three hours going through it. Um, it is, there's a lot of eyes on these things. Even with that said, I hear you. And we need to keep trying to do even better.
Well, the interest, yeah, no, thank you. In the interest of moving on, we're gonna move on. Um, we, let's, let's, uh, pull together the Economic Development, Community Development Committee. Uh, let's get a, a full briefing because I mean, I, I, I see it in, in action, the, uh, uh, interdepartmental work that's, that's happening. Or even our Minority Business Advisory Council is very involved. And Melissa, uh, through OBO manages, uh, Clint is, is, is in the house at each of those meetings. So there's a lot of integrated conversations happening. And obviously, this, this is a commitment, uh, that we've all, um, made, uh, and we're gonna have to continue to work to build capacity uh, in that space, particularly in, in water sewer where we spend, um, uh, the vast majority of our contractual, uh, resources as, uh, City Manager just mentioned. I do think, uh, it's, it's probably a perfect time, obviously, for, for Teresa, for everyone to get fully involved in understanding the entire process. Uh, and, and then, um, and as we, as we, we know people, um, um, trying to pull more people maybe into the process and, and, uh, getting people, uh, available, um, and up to speed and maybe helping us meet some of those places where we have, uh, uh, needs and, uh, to build some, some capacity. Uh, so let's, I mean, since, since we're having this discussion right now, I think it's important that even the committee meeting, uh, will be virtual, maybe making that, um, public as well for others, just to get a full briefing. As all the things that we do, in addition to the, um, not just a, um, um, small women-owned business DB, IB space, uh, I also, um, obviously wanna focus on the, um, on the, um, LB, the local, local, local business. And, and, and I mean, you remember, I mean, ten years ago, when we, we talked about having a, a local, um, preference in terms of businesses, people thought it would be the end of the world. And it's been very good, um, for our, for our local businesses. So let's, um, let's, let's get, and get that scheduled. Uh, let's, uh, plan to move forward. Um, uh, thanks for, um, uh, Mr. Davis, Ms. McDowell, Mr. Rickman, and everyone else shares the same, um, um, concerns as well. So let's get that committee, uh, meeting set and, uh, entertain a motion, uh, to approve the consent agenda.
I move, we approve the consent or general items three through twenty-eight.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, we will move the previous question. Kirk Carrow.
Mr. Vernon?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Ms. Devine? Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Ben, Mayor Benjamin?
Hi. And let's get that meeting set pretty soon. Um, I'm City Manager. I mean, all of our, all of our discussions, universal discussions around equity inclusion are important, all of this. Thank you.
And I would add the disparity study, Mr. Mayor. Only other thing that I was going to say is something the staff and I've been looking at. So it'd be a perfect opportunity to, to raise that with you all as well.
Add that to the agenda. Thank you.
I'm.
Quarter of all America, did we, uh, adopt the minutes?
Yes, sir. I was gonna, thank you, Mr. Davis, to, for keeping us, uh, on, on track with, with that very important, um, those observations. And we need to go back to approve the minutes, so.
I forgot, we're, I, 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 I'm sorry. I thought we were.
Yeah, I thought we were adopting the, the motion to adopt the agenda.
Yeah, that was motion to adopt the agenda. I apologize. I thought we, uh, I think the motion said, uh, 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 agenda items three to twenty-eight. So we, uh, I'm not sure exactly where we are. Uh, my, my, my Paul Minter with his, his beard over there is, uh, is, uh, not keeping us, uh, attached.
Legal Beagle.
Yeah.
Eric, I, I thought they approved, they adopted the agenda with my amendment, correct?
It, it was just, it was just thirty, it was just, uh, um, thirty minutes ago, we started the call, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Let's, let's get a motion.
On the adoption of the agenda.
Does this, uh, motion, the motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second? This is April twenty, April twenty-first and May seventh, moving second, any discussion with the previous question, Kirk Carrow?
Mr. Vernon?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Ms. Devine? Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
And Eric, I think I'm hearing you say you need the adoption of the agenda.
Yeah, we're still gonna do that. We're gonna get back to that. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna come back to that. Oh, we, oh, we, did we, what did we just do?
No, I took it as the motion was to adopt the agenda and then we approved the minutes. And so now we're going to item two.
Well, in the interest, in the interest of procedure, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
All right. With the previous question, Kirk Carrow.
Mr. Vernon?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi. Thank y'all. And I, I, I tease y'all about the time on the, on that, that is incredibly important issue, a very important issue, uh, raised, uh, Mr. Davis. And, and thanks, Ms. Ms. Wilson, um, for the answers. And we look forward to doing a deeper dive in the, uh, in the community meeting, uh, when, when, when the time comes. Uh, I think we have, uh, Chief Tinsley, um, uh, on the, to, um, uh, make a report on COVID-19. Uh, everyone sees where we are. Just since our, our, our last meeting, we've obviously eclipsed eleven-hundred deaths here in South Carolina. Uh, with seventy-one thousand confirmed, uh, cases. Uh, that, I, again, I wanna thank, uh, our council and Teresa and our incredible team here, uh, at the city for our forward-thinking, uh, response. And I think it's informed by, um, good public health, uh, data and, and, and science, work to keep our people safe, everything from the masking ordinance, just the things that we're doing internally. And we'll talk, we'll probably talk about a few of those things, uh, maybe, um, uh, as well. But we're gonna keep leading from the front. And we gotta get arms around the public health, uh, crisis. If we do that, we'll get, well, our, our economy will rebound, our children can go back to school, and we can start seeing some normalcy, uh, with the, uh, ad to the, of a vaccine sometime, hopefully in the not-too-distant future. But just again, thank you, um, for, um, all of your great work. I think, um, Teresa, is, is Harry gonna give a report now?
Yes, sir.
Hi. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Director, Harry Tinsley, Emergency Management.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of Council, Madam City Manager. Uh, thank you for your time. Uh, we wanted to give you a, a brief update on, uh, the COVID. So as far, so we'll start with testing. And these numbers will change as of this afternoon with the new posting that, that will be done by DHEC. But in South Carolina, there are over six hundred and thirty-eight thousand total tests as of yesterday, the reporting. Uh, five hundred and, over five hundred and forty-six thousand of those, uh, were negative. Uh, ninety-one thousand, uh, over ninety-one thousand were positive. So currently, right now, as of this hour, there are, uh, seventy- So currently, right now, as of this hour, there are seventy-one thousand two hundred and thirteen confirmed positive tests statewide. And unfortunately, there are over one thousand, as the mayor said, over one thousand one hundred and forty-seven confirmed deaths in our state due to COVID. Uh, as of the fifteenth of July, this reporting data is is of the fifteenth, hospital bed utilization capacity in the state was seventy-two point six nine percent. Um, that data is uh changing, as it's important to note. Um, the hospital is the current hospitalization uh data is not available right now as DHEC is transitioning, as I know most of you are aware, to new tele-tracking system and new reporting process. We do expect that data to post soon and we will make sure you get that. Um, and you may get it on your smart device at the same time. As far as Richland County, uh currently, there are six thousand one hundred and seventeen confirmed total positive cases. Um, a hundred and nineteen uh deaths unfortunately in our county, a hundred and nine, excuse me, a hundred and nine. And as far as City Columbia, some preliminary data, and this is just preliminary at this point. Uh, approximately one thousand eight hundred and five cases within the city limits uh over the last thirty days. And it is estimated, and this is just a rough, rough, very preliminary estimate, that potentially eighty-seven percent of those have recovered. Uh, there are still several hundred uh that remain active. An important note on that data is that with the increase in testing and also the recent spikes that we're seeing in new cases, could mean that active number is higher uh with the potential of more individuals being sick. We will continue to to run that down and provide that data to you as we get it. Uh, as far as employee testing and uh PPE, personal protective equipment. Uh, currently, to date, four hundred and seventeen employees have been affected uh either by quarantine, self-isolating and or testing. Uh, forty-five of those employees have tested positive for COVID nineteen. The departments that are affected by staffing levels are twenty departments uh to date currently. Our Contracts and Procurement Department uh has provided protective mask and PPE uh sanitizing solutions and various products to all departments. Our Fulfillment Center continues to process requests that are made uh and has sufficient PPE stocks on hand inventory. As far as our mask up, um, we have uh four frontline departments that are currently serving as ambassadors. Our code enforcement, our customer care, uh parks and recreation, and parking services. All departments are reporting having good educational opportunities at this time with the general public and our customers. A high degree of compliance has also been observed, which is uh, which is a very positive thing. Over six, seven hundred and sixty contacts have been made to date. Uh, as far as our citizen uh distribution of protective masks that we did during the uh two-week period from June twenty-nine to July ten, uh our Parks and Recreation staff uh through four different locations over those two-week periods uh distributed uh fifteen thousand, over fifteen thousand protective masks to our citizens. And those distribution locations were our Busby Center Community, our Busby Street Community Center, Hampton Park Neighborhood Center, Earlwood Community Center, and our South Estu neighborhood center, and we had good uh good turnout on those uh locations. As far as our mask ordinance reporting, uh our Fire Marshals continue to educate uh businesses and our uh citizens on the importance of using masks uh and the requirements of the ordinance. Um, they're seeing generally overall good compliance. Uh, there's had ninety-three visits to date. Um, there's over eighty-seven contacts where educational materials were were provided and were received uh very well. Uh, just in those uh, in the Deputy Fire Marshal's interaction, they've also given out a hundred and eighty individual masks uh to our general public, uh those folks that they see on a regular day-to-day basis as they engage in their duties. Uh, they have issued ten warnings, um, five citations have been issued to date. There have been no individual citations uh at this point. As far as internally, some of the safety and risk assessments that are being done by Safety and Risk Management Department, uh forty-six risk assessments of city facilities and departments have been completed. Uh, two external risk assessments have also been completed with our some external partners. Uh, these risk assessments, as I say, are ongoing. Uh, also, the Department of Safety and Risk Management and our Human Resources Department have composed um and implemented a COVID nineteen disinfecting and cleaning, you're living in work areas, uh video for all employees. That has been posted on our inner city under our safety tab, uh and that's, that's, I encourage y'all to go look at that, there's some good information contained in that. Uh, as far as our Support Services Department, uh our um city facilities mitigations and modifications. Um, they're continuing to ensure that our, their facilities are clean on a daily basis. Um, a hundred and seventy-eight preventive cleanings have also been conducted in addition to that. Uh, they've constructed over one hundred protective barriers. These are the sneeze guards and things that are needed as we transition back in to make sure that we're um protecting as as best we can. And they installed over two hundred and thirty signs at this point. Uh, social distancing mitigations uh have also been implemented at our Watch Square, it's eleven thirty-six Washington Street to include all elevators uh to make sure that we're uh maintaining social distancing as we go forward. Uh, in closing, uh departments continue to clean facilities, offices, uh their their workspaces, those highly touched areas. And our Safety and Risk uh Management folks are out there, uh they continue to provide guidance. Um, as as much needed and uh monitor, you know, those operations to ensure effective sanitizing and disinfecting. They do it on a frequent basis. And our uh Public and Media Relations folks continue to push out information across all media platforms, highlighting our resilient Columbia campaign, our pledge, mask up, COVID nineteen. Uh, and and CS's response to including testing locations and other important information. So we wanted to provide you just a quick uh brief snapshot of where we are. Uh, additional information will be in the City Manager's briefing note. Uh, pending any questions, that concludes my report. Thank you.
No, no, that was a great report and and uh obviously, some some of that data, obviously, I I saw on your most recent communication, maybe uh uh earlier today or yesterday, I forget when it was, um, Harry. Uh, but could you, um, I know it's, I've I've got some of that from a few different places, some from the City Manager, some from um, Kate Hampton and Melissa and 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 um and also uh uh Economic Development. Could you put all that in one place? Uh, cause I I'd I'd like it for uh us, the seven of us, be able to push that out uh to the communities and our and our various lists as well. I think it will, it will be personally edifying and encouraging uh the folks to see the the comprehensive nature uh and the thoughtful nature that the city has uh approached. Um, so as as much as you can put in one place, easy to consume, uh would would be would be great. And and let's figure out how we can, how we can push it out. Uh, best, Teresa. Um, some people, you'd be amazed, some people needed, needed, and you know, and um a hundred plus characters of us on Twitter, the other folks actually still do like to read. Uh, and 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 want a chance to do that. I see Mr. Duval is taking his his meeting in Hall Steakhouse, so he's wearing his mask uh as we, as we, as we speak, um, uh doing his job, but but let, but let's, let's definitely do that in um uh uh Director Tinsley touched on it. Uh, I really also wanna kind of touch on the great work that just various departments just falling in, some of these great philanthropic efforts we have going on, working to build uh intersectoral uh partnerships. Uh, it, uh, uh, folks are really stepping up in so many different ways. Serving the national committees and uh and and partnerships. Uh, I gotta give uh everyone a shout-out. I really want really give Kate Hampton a real, a real, um, uh, I can't say atta boy, atta girl is as well, atta woman. Uh, but but some of the work around around testing uh and just really leveraging uh the great work that the DHEC has been doing. The DHEC, uh, leveraging its partnerships in U S C and and uh Prisma and everyone else. Uh, just a few weeks ago, we had the largest testing event in the state. Um, over, based over at Benedict College, a whole lot of folks came together uh via Prisma, we tested over two thousand uh folks over 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 two days. Uh, just this past week, uh again, another partnership that we, that we, that we pulled together in U S C and uh Fort Jackson, uh working with General Beagle. Uh, the K ran the point on, I think they tested over eight hundred folks there. Uh, but but this is, this is a time when everyone comes together, if it's Kroger Health or Walmart or what what have you, everyone's just kinda making it happen. And and uh and and some of these things you can measure very easily. Some you cannot measure very easily, but you know that they're going towards a common good. And and I, and I, I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you to the people in Columbia uh for the incredible support of of our efforts around around masking and and mask up Columbia S C. Uh, the com- the community, our citizens have stepped up. And um, uh, if in fact, we continue to show the 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 persistence and resilience necessary, we can, we can, we can, we can beat this thing. Uh, but it's gonna require all of us to work together, but uh, let's see, Teresa, Harry, y'all work together, just as much of that as 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 you think, believe me, I think people want to see what's happening and and that that's as comprehensive as a report, a report as you're gonna get uh in any city in the country. Um, so I wanna make sure it's out there and available to people and make sure we can push it out to our various constituencies.
Yes, sir. Most of it's in that note, but we can make sure it's all for public consumption and pushing. Public side, I think it's, or yes, sir.
Exactly. I would, I'm even thinking about the way we used to, uh, when we had the flood, you know, we'd be, we had an internal document. Let's make it a public document and just pull this information out there.
Will do.
All right, thank, thank you very much. Thank, thank you, um, Harry, um, for all your work.
Yes, sir.
I think Mr. Rick, I'm not sure if if Mr. Rickman's screen is showing Mr. Mayor.
I see, I can, I can see Daniel.
Okay.
Okay, I can see him. Um, all right, uh. Where were the agenda?
What about the consent agenda?
Did you have a, did he, did you have a comment, Mr.?
Did I?
I thought your hand was raised.
No, ma'am.
I'm sorry, okay.
All right. I think we've, I think uh we're gonna, we're gonna approve the consent agenda for the third time real quick, just this. This says, just in case, okay? I wanna call from Teresa, Teresa Knox, uh, in a few months, and we didn't do it right. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Is there a second? Uh, I think Mr. Duval's second, but he's on mute, so I'll I'll second that. Uh, well, um, with the previous question, Kirk Carrow.
Mr. Vernon?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi, thank you, thank you, everyone. This items three through twenty-eight. All right, I'm the City Manager.
Yes, sir. Ordinance is second reading, item twenty-nine, ordinance number two thousand twenty zero five seven. Authorizing the City Manager to execute an agreement regarding the use of the Columbia and Capitol LLC, the multi-entertainment facility in the Bull Street Development.
There a motion?
I move approval of item twenty-nine.
Yeah, a second. Discussion. All right, Mr. Rickman?
We were supposed to get some information on that, and we'll see.
What additional information, Mr. Rickman? I know that Ms. Gentry shared um most of what I thought you needed. And if we missed something, please let me know.
I mean, I thought we were getting a list of what it was gonna be used for. I mean, there are no opera- they were a recipient of PPP, what money's being used for, and I wanted to make sure that we had in place. You know, we are covered that these expenses come in the future, that we're not responsible. You know, this is our money that we put into that fund. It's not.
And Mr. Wilson, I can give an overview again of the conversation from the first reading. Um, these expenses will be used to cover the ongoing operation at Segra Park, such as the utility bills, which are fairly high. And a building of this magnitude, you can't just turn it off and shut it down and walk away for a few months. You have to keep the HVAC going. There's electricity costs that are pretty high in comparison with your normal-sized building. Um, the grass maintenance, you have to continue um maintaining the the field and operating that. Um, while they have certainly scaled back operations, they're doing everything they can to save as much as possible. But they have to also think about the long-term maintenance of the facility. Um, so these funds will be used for those type of activities. They will not use them if not needed. They will give us invoices for any expenses that they're requesting access to the capital request, or cap- capital fund is what we call it. And these funds are restricted to the Segra Park. The these funds are not available for the city to use elsewhere. They were made up of um a variety of sources to include the naming rights portion of the city's um naming rights agreement, and those funds automatically go into this account, um made up of some attendance numbers when you receive a certain number of attendance. Um, hardball puts money into this fund, so, so again, I wanna reiterate, these funds are not available for the city to use otherwise.
And this.
We also, yes, sir, go ahead.
And Missy, no, and Missy, and again, while this is not uh anticipated, like so much is not anticipated during the pandemic, this is in the spirit of maintaining uh um uh that facility, so um I I I understand um, Mr. Rickman's legitimate questions and 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 concerns, but um.
I just. I got a question, Mayor.
Okay, good. Okay, please, Daniel, then 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 will.
Now, I just, uh, you know, I I just think we need to to make sure that we understand what we've committed to and that we're saying that, you know, it's gonna be recovery all over, including the city finances, and you know, this is not for serve. And so any of the fun we've gotta come up with, take up for this, takes away from a basic service and I just want that on the record.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much. Um, Mr. Rickman, Mr. Brennan?
Yeah, so, uh, I guess to expand on Councilman Rickman's comment, uh, obligation-wise, are we as a city meeting our obligations that we agreed to when this draft was formed and the money they're asking for, that falls in what they committed for their obligations for operations? Does that, does that make sense? I think Missy can answer that.
So the intent of the agreement, and this goes back, the capital, the city capital fund was set up as part of the venue license agreement. It was always intended that funds would be set aside into an account to be used for the maintenance of the facility. Um, with the understanding that the ongoing utility bills would not fall into that category during normal operations. Obviously, with the pandemic, um, everything's changed in the world and and their ability, with the loss of the twenty-twenty baseball season, their ability to generate revenue that covers those monthly expenses has just been handicapped. They they are doing everything they can to return some activity to the facility. We, these funds that they're asking to access will not be used to support any of those activities. For instance, they're doing restaurant nights. On, I believe, Saturday night, you can sign up and go enjoy a meal and um watch a program. I think they've shown baseball games and other such things, so you can do that. They're not using these funds to support those activities. But they are needing funds to just keep the basic operations going. They will replenish those funds, whether it be in lump sum amounts or at the time maintenance is needed on the facility. If if this fund is not replenished and there's not funds available in the amount they've taken out of it, they are responsible for replenishing that and and they're committed to doing so. Um.
What's the, what's the timeframe for that repayment? Is it?
It's over the term of the agreement. Obviously, it's unknown when their normal seasons will resume. Ninety percent of their revenue is generated from baseball. So while we love the fact that they have three hundred-plus events there every single year, ninety percent of their revenue is generated from baseball games. If baseball does not return as normal during the twenty-one season, obviously, their position is still more difficult than during normal operations. Even if it does return, there's likely going to be changes to how many people they can have in attendance and, you know, there's likely going to be changes for normal operations. So they're looking at how to make adjustments. Obviously, Major League Baseball is going to lead a large part of that conversation because they're at the mercy of minor league baseball, but they're certainly doing everything they can. I I wanna again state, these funds are not available to the city to use anywhere other than on Segra Park. The city does have to concur with how they use these maintenance funds. They, so they can't use them outside of the city agreeing to it, but they're only intended to be used for the maintenance of the facility. They, we are using them earlier than originally intended. Had the pandemic pandemic not happened, um, the the funding would certainly sit there and continue to um increase. So they're going to return the funds. It is over the term of the agreement. There's no way to predict that in two years they can return everything they're taking out, because we don't know what, we don't know what six months looks like, and we're all in that situation, not just the baseball team.
And Missy, and the, during the first season, wasn't there, wasn't the amount that accrued higher than what was anticipated paid by Hardball into the?
It, they, they had a few good seasons. Obviously, when Tim Tebow was here, um, attendance was at record level. So certainly, there were some funds, um, there were revenue generated for this fund that was higher than what had been projected originally. So yes, ma'am, there, there were certainly some higher than projected years um as far as building the fund up. But that's a good thing. We, we all intend, um, city and Hardball included, intend for this fund to continue to build up. So when the roof needs to be replaced, this is where funding fits for that. So there's been a few occasions when um maintenance has been performed using this fund. And I know Gregory just walked in here, so he can tell me what the, I believe we did some concourse work when we traded the concourse the year two or prior to season two.
With the epoxy coatings on the.
Right.
Really, what we're doing is more, I'll call them capital improvements to the stadium. But again, the fund was established to keep the venue relevant, always relevant, always uh clean and bright and new.
This is an unanticipated use that will be replenished by um Hardball, um, but certainly consists, you know, with the spirit of, 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 of the agreement. I'm gonna, unless there's some additional questions, Mr. Brennan?
Just one last question, Mr. Mayor. Uh, see, who has final say to the city when they do submit the receipts uh up to fifty thousand as to what, what is acceptable for reimbursement?
So Gregory Tucker's our primary liaison with anything Bull Street related. So they will originate with Gregory. They will go through finance to get the checks cut. So there will be checks and balances. But again, they have to have receipts that demonstrate actual expenses before we're gonna cut a check.
Great, thank you all so much.
Move the previous question, Kurt Colorado.
Mr. Vernon?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye, thank you. All right, we got, we got um a pretty rigorous uh list of ordinances and, and resolutions. And then we got some not only the public hearing, but also some citizens who wanna do public inputs. Let's, let's endeavor to work our way through this. Uh, and we also have, obviously, an executive session agenda we'll take on after um somebody here from some of our citizens. But let's see if we can work our way through this in a, in a very thoughtful, orderly, concise manner. All right? All right, may I say, Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item thirty of uh your first ordinance, first reading, ordinance number two thousand twenty zero four nine, granting an encroachment to four-on-one Hayward Street LLC for the use of the right-of-way area of the four hundred and five hundred blocks of Hayward Street.
There are motion?
I move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, who got the, who got the motion? I, I kinda howled as the, as, as the, the movement.
That I did too. I switched it to Mr. Davis and Mr. Duval.
Second, Mr. Davis, okay. I wanna move expeditiously. We can't move a second the same day. Thank you, Howard, you're awesome. All right, uh, move the previous question, Kurt Colorado.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item thirty-one, ordinance number two thousand twenty zero five one, granting an encroachment to South Carolina Automobile Dealers Association for the use of the right-of-way area of the fourteen-hundred block of Pulaski Street for the installation and maintenance of a.
There are motion.
Wall.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes, sir.
Could you talk a little bit more about that, that particular item number thirty-one?
I will have, yes, sir. I'll probably have to defer to either legal or I'm not sure if Clint may be familiar with the encroachment or Robert.
They went on?
They, um, they went all talking at once. Help me out.
Yeah, it looks like, well, just look, it looks like, uh, Ed, like they, they've been trying to build and maintain a, a brick wall, uh, but it extends into the city's right-of-way. Um, and obviously, that requires action um by us uh to approve that. We, only, only we can um indeed approve that. I'm trying to get my sense as exactly where Fortune One Pulaski is.
Trying to figure out where Pulaski is. Is that, is that, is that in the vicinity where the, where the building is being constructed over there?
It is, uh, is behind, um, um, uh, I guess, of course, you know, the, the building is back on, back off Hampton Street, uh, just off the Higi and um kind of a, let's see, this is Pulaski and Hampton, uh, Pulaski and Hampton. So if you're coming up the hill, heading towards the library in the back of the police department, the building is right there at the corner of, of Hampton and Pulaski. Um, so I assume it's, it's somewhere um around there, not around any residence.
I didn't get any questions of staff during our review, Reverend McDowell, so I, usually that means it's pretty routine, but we can hold it until I get a better answer for you.
Yeah.
Mayor, there's a description of it in our backup material. It's a, it's a concrete sidewall five feet in width and a hundred and forty-five feet long with landscaping and irrigation. And it's got a, a personal injury, uh, general liability insurance on it of six hundred thousand dollars.
That was, that was a concern that I had, whether or not there is some, there is some insurability issues.
Yeah, it's, it's got a, they're requiring a six hundred thousand dollar personal injury property damage, naming the city as the insurer.
Okay, I'm fine. That'll do.
Move adoption.
That'll do for me.
All right, thank you. Is there a second? Second, move the previous question, Kurt Colorado.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi.
Item thirty-two, ordinance number two thousand twenty zero six nine, granting MCI Metro Access Transmission Services Corp. Its successors and assigns the right power and authority to construct, install, maintain, and operate in, over, upon, and under the streets and public places of the City of Columbia is line.
So move, is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? And then, uh, move the previous question, Kurt Colorado.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Moving into a period of resolutions, item thirty-three, resolution number R two thousand twenty zero six seven, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the City of, of Columbia and the Columbia Housing Authority for environmental studies. Um, I did wanna add, Mayor and Council, that I've asked a lot of questions about this item. Um, it is a HUD requirement that um the city serve in this capacity and um essentially be on the record with the environmental studies occurring that the housing authority has to conduct for Allen Bennett at court um forward. And so we, this allows us to still dig into a couple of things, but um just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Super. Is there a motion?
So move, Ms. Chair.
All right, is this, is there a second?
Second.
All right, in discussion. Uh, Mr. Rickaman?
Is this just a pass-through?
Yes, sir. It's their responsibility, the housing authority, but because of HUD's involvement, they.
It's a HUD requirement that requires that we, they come to us.
They almost consider us a responsible party, but I just wanted you to take that language, responsible party, likely they're responsible for it.
And I think Daniel's asking who's responsible for the bill. They have to pay, it, it's their bill, not, not, not us. Yeah.
Yes, it is.
All right, move the previous question, Kurt Colorado.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item thirty-four, resolution number R two thousand twenty zero six nine, authorizing the purchase of a point-two-one acre alleyway located on the southern side of Blossom Street in Richland County.
As you have a motion.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm with the previous question, Kurt Colorado.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye, thank you.
Item thirty-five, resol, and items, um, let's say, Mayor and Council, items thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven, and thirty-eight are your annual agreements that you approve regarding homeless services. Item thirty-five, resolution number R two thousand twenty zero seven, authorizing this.
So, Daniel, wanna take all four together? Is that, is that, is that okay?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I love, I, I love you guys. I talked to Theresa Wilson, Theresa Knox, and the clerk, but yeah, okay. Let's take all four together. Um, that, that's a motion by Mr. Duval. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
All right, move the previous question, Kurt Colorado.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye, thank you.
Item thirty-nine, resolution number R two thousand twenty zero seven five, authorizing the city manager to execute a sixth lease amendment between the City of Columbia and First Citizens Bank and Trust Company for leases of approximately thirteen thousand six hundred and forty-seven square feet.
So move. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Rickaman?
Uh, I, I, just for clarification, I thought we were moving completely out of that building.
Yes, sir. I was about to say we are going so expeditiously for me that I was happy to say this will be our last lease amendment um for the facility. We needed to just unwind that final piece to get um Harry and those out of the basement and to also allow the congressman to go direct from now on with First Citizens.
So the thirteen thousand square feet, all, uh, tens lease?
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, all, all the basement, yeah.
Yes, sir.
All right, um, move the previous question, Kurt Colorado.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
At this time, we will, um, Mr. Mayor, ask that you all open a public hearing and first reading for zoning and planning matters as outlined, starting with um item forty, Mr. Mayor. And I want to say Mayor Benjamin, items forty, forty-one. Erica, help me out, all the way through which item involved, please.
The first four items, first forty through, yes, ma'am, forty through forty-three.
Okay.
All right, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go get me some coffee. Uh, you, you gotta tell me how efficiently Mr. McDowell runs a meeting.
We're hurry up and get your coffee.
Mr. Hampton, are you online with us?
Who's that?
I was asking. I, hello, I, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
My problem is, is I'm unable to share my screen right now. So I'm hopeful I've got backups who can share their screens, either John or Rachel.
I got you.
Okay.
This is Rachel.
We both had you, but Rachel, go ahead.
Thank you, John, and Rachel, and Krista.
All right. Hold on one second.
All right.
All right, can you all see that?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, well, I, I will start it off, and they can pick up if, if this doesn't, if this doesn't come through. But your first item is an annexation and a comprehensive plan map amendment at one-five-six Island View Circle. A request to annex, assign a land use classification of UER two and QUDR.
All right. Are there questions? We're gonna take these one by one, Ms. Wilson?
Yes, sir, Ms. Reverend McDowell. Oh, sorry, hold on. Yes, sir, can you hear me, Reverend McDowell?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And Reverend McDowell, this is a zoning public hearing. Um, we would ask that if, if the caller is calling, is, is on the line and public input, and you have about thirty callers on the line, and it's only one person that we're not sure if they're calling in for this item, so I'd like the opportunity to check in with that caller to see if they have remarks about this item.
All right, would you check in?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Did you say we had thirty people waiting to talk?
No, sir, just some of them are listening. But we do have a caller that we've added to the line, phone number ending in seven-two-three-four. And we'd like to know if you're calling to comment about the annexation, comp plan, map amendment for one-fifty-six Island View Circle.
Erica, when you identify that caller, do you ask them if they are interested in saying something about that annexation?
Yes, sir. And right now, we have the caller muted because they're receiving a lot of um background noise. So we'd ask that caller, if they can hear me, to mute any sound they have in the background. And as soon as they do that, we will add them to the meeting.
All right, nice to hear.
Oh, hello, I'm not, um, calling concern to annexation. I'm ca, calling, um, pertaining um to the Richmond County Black Collective, which has emailed over to the city council and to the mayor on regarding a potential police reform proposal. Yes?
Is this pertaining to? Sir, this, is this pertaining to the annexation question relative to the annexation?
As I said earlier, it's not. Uh, I was calling pertaining to a, a message out sent by the Richmond County Black Collective. I'm presenting a police reform bill and a potential meeting with city council and Mayor Benjamin.
Okay, Mr. McDowell, if we, if you may, um, sir, if you could, and we're gonna end your speaking session when it's time for public input, you can press star three and rejoin the speaker queue at that time.
It sounds good to me, thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other callers for this item.
Is there anyone, is there anyone in the queue that, um, wants to speak to this particular annexation?
Nothing.
All right, are there any other questions?
I move adoption of item forty.
All right, is there a second? Has been moved and seconded that the, uh, proposed the annexation of one-five-six Island View be adopted. Uh, are we ready to vote? Ms., uh, Ms. Erica?
Yes, sir. Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin? Thank you.
Okay, Krista?
All right, ready for the next item is an annexation comprehensive plan map amendment and zoning map amendment for one-point-seven acres on county line trail. It is a request to annex, assign a land use classification of UER two and a zone, a zoning of D one.
All right, Erica, are there, are there persons that, there in the queue that would like to speak to that?
No, sir, not at this time.
I said.
Go ahead, Daniel.
Go ahead, Daniel.
Approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are we ready to vote? Ms. Erica?
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Thank you.
Forty-two is an annexation comprehensive plan map amendment and zoning map amendment for eighteen-point-zero-two acres on county line trail. This is a request to annex, assign a land use classification of UER one and a zoning classification.
land use classification of UER one and a zoning classification of PUDR.
All right. Miss Erica, is there, are there persons in line to speak to this particular annexation?
No, sir, no additional callers have joined the queue.
All right.
Ask the group for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
They moved and seconded. Ms. Erica, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Forty-three is an annexation comprehensive plan map amendment and zoning map amendment for twenty point seven four acres on county line trail. A request to annex assigned the land use classification of UER one and a zoning classification of PUDR.
All right. Miss Erica, are there persons in the queue to have questions relative to this annexation?
No, sir.
All right.
Move.
Been moved, is there, is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Thank you all for your patience.
Number forty-four is an annexation comprehensive plan map amendment and zoning map amendment at two one two five Apple Valley Road. Request to annex and assign the land use classification of UER two and a zoning of RG one.
I'm back, Mr. McDowell. It's good to see the city still standing. I never had, never had, never had these concerns with Mr. Devine was there, you know, but it's, it's, is anyone, is, is anyone here to speak in favor of or opposed to this, um, item?
Mr. Mayor, I know this is probably a little different, but I would, I don't, I don't know if Chief and those are in a position to speak to it right now. I do think there are some challenges in this area, as recent as right now, there, there are.
Why don't, why don't we hold that, why don't we hold that item, defer to items to another, another meeting, okay?
That'd be great, thank you.
All right, we're gonna hold item forty-four. All right, items forty-five.
Sounds good. All right, number forty-five is an annexation comprehensive plan map amendment and zoning map amendment at four five two one Broad River Road. A request to annex assigned a land use classification of AC two and a zoning of M one.
All right, is there anyone speaking favor of or against this, or any other issues raised, Madam City Manager? Madam Clerk, anyone online?
Well, we'd like to remind callers that if they would like to speak on any of the zoning items, to press star three when your item is called, but at this time, Mayor, no additional callers on the line.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Move the previous question, Court Colorado.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye, thank you. Forty-six.
Annexation comprehensive plan map amendment and zoning map amendment at one two zero Metal Park Drive. Request to annex assigned a land use classification of industrial and IND and a zoning of light industrial, that's M one.
All right, is anyone here, anyone signed up to speak in favor of or against this, or any other issues need to be raised, Madam City Manager? If not, Madam Clerk, then, um, we'll, uh, is there a motion? Or is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion with the previous question, Court Colorado.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye, and I do want to encourage folks who are holding on the line who would have talked public safety and law enforcement issues, we have just a handful of other items, including some commission appointments, and will be, will be up pretty quickly. So, be patient, we'll be with you very shortly. All right, Madam Clerk?
Number forty.
Madam, Madam Planner.
That's quite all right. Item number forty-seven is an annexation comprehensive plan map amendment and zoning map amendment for eight ten Sparkle Bear Lane. A request to annex and assign a land use classification of AC three and a zoning classification of C three.
Is anyone here to speak in favor of or against this item? Anyone online, Madam, Madam Clerk? All right, good deal. Is there a motion? Move Mr. Rickaman, is there a second?
Second.
All right, say, Mr. Duval, in discussion, say none, we'll move the previous question, Court Colorado.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye, thank you.
This item is a zoning map amendment. It is on, it's for the, to change a Wheeler Hill PUD. Obviously, a number of addresses on Hendrick Street, Rice, Calway Alley, the north side of Phelps Street, Pickens, and Kataba. This is a request to rezone the parcels from PUDR to general residential to facilitate redevelopment into residential. This, this project will also require the review and approval of the planning commission of the site plan if the rezoning is approved.
All right. Is there anyone to speak in favor of or against this item?
And again, there may be people on the line who wish to speak about this one, and we do ask that they go ahead and raise their hand with that star three.
All right, do you have anyone, Madam Clerk?
No, sir, everyone who is in the speaker queue is waiting to speak in public input at this time.
Super, all right. All right, see, none, there's a motion, is a motion for approval? Is there a second? All right, moving second, discussion, say none, I move the previous question, Court Colorado.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye, thank you.
Number forty-nine is a zoning map amendment at three two zero nine North Beltline Boulevard. It's a request to rezone the parcel from single-family residential RS two to C one.
All right, is there anyone here to speak in favor of or against this? Madam Clerk, anyone? If not, is there a motion?
I've got a question.
I'm sorry, please, Mr. Duval.
I noticed that this, the staff was recommending, recommended denial of this, and it passed forward to, is this the same situation we had on the next corner down on Beltline and Two Notch where the encroachment into the neighborhood is the problem?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, and so, as has been the case for many years, that's been a policy of council, but oftentimes, there's, there's instances where council has found it to be that advantageous to go ahead and rezone the parcels.
All right.
We, we heard, we did not hear any concerns from the neighborhood.
I move approval.
Mr. Mayor.
No, please, please, Teresa.
I just had a question, just quickly, Krista, I mean, it's so, the, I understand that we didn't hear anything from the neighborhood, do we know what's being proposed on that, that parcel?
Yes, it would be an office for a security company. So, and obviously, when you rezone it to that zoning classification, it won't be anything within that zoning classification, but this is just proposed for an office at this time.
Okay.
Isn't that, Krista, that office borders on what neighborhood again? That's North Beltline. Okay.
Krista, did you hear Mr. McDowell's question?
Yeah, I, I, I can look it up quickly. It's taxing my ability to know it right off the top of my head, but we certainly can look that up.
Okay, let's give it, let's give it one quick second. Yeah, this is, this is, this is on the other side of Two Notch, Ed. This is across Two Notch on the McDonald's. So, this would be going towards, if I'm correct, towards, uh, towards Josh Lorick's church.
Yes. Between, um.
Thank you, thank you.
It is Rochelle Heights and Victory Garden.
Yeah, I know where you are now.
Okay. All right, are you comfortable?
Not really. I know where you are now. I know where you are now.
We have, we have, we have, we have a motion that, that still needs a second, if there will be one.
Second.
Second.
All right, all right. Moving promptly second, if more discussion needs to be had, is the time to have this now? And if not, we can, we can move forward.
Mr. Do you know where the Bender current office is located?
Well, this is statewide security, right? So, this, I assume they're still on Taylor Street, I don't know where Kerry's business is.
Yeah, that was the last known location that I'm aware of, is on Taylor Street.
Your previously was on Taylor Street, right next to the town, to the township. My first time seeing, seeing this, I, I know that on that side of Beltline, some of the neighborhoods are not as engaged as some of the others on, on, on West, West Beltline. So, you might, do we, do we know if there has been actual neighborhood engagement on this issue?
There is, there is not.
If, if, if. Okay, please, Ed.
Yeah, Krista, let me ask you that. The denial, of course, by the commission was based on what? Just, just the other reasons available?
Well, the commission actually took a second vote to approve.
Yeah, they were, they were stuck on a tie vote, and then they, then they had a second vote to approve, what, two, one, three, three to four, two. Staff has recommended denial.
And Mr. Shealy may be on, and Mr. Shealy may be on the call, I'm not sure if he wanted to ask questions, that, or we could conclude the zoning public hearing and hold first reading, however, would make you all most comfortable.
All right, well, we've had, well, this is the public hearing, so we can, we can actually take, we can actually take up approval denial at any point, not, it didn't have to be today, right? As long as we have the public hearing, is that correct?
Correct, that's correct.
All right, is Mr. Shealy on the line? Eric, if you are, what's, what's the process, Madam Clerk? Is it star three, and if, if Mr. McDowell, if there's some unreadiness, and you want to hear some neighborhood input, then certainly you can, you can do that at some point as well. Let's just decide how you want to move forward. Ed?
Is he, is?
I haven't heard, I have not heard him chiming yet.
Well, if he chimes in later on, I would certainly move that we defer that conversation until we can get more information. I need some more information.
We're gonna hold on, we're gonna hold on item forty-nine, thirty-two, and nine, North Beltline Boulevard, but the public hearing has been held.
Terrific.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. The next item fifty is a zoning map amendment at fifteen twenty-seven Lion, a number of addresses on Lion Street. This is a request to rezone the parcels from General Commercial, that's C three, to RG two. This is to facilitate the redevelopment at Gonzales Gardens.
Right, is there, is there a motion? I'm sorry, is there someone here to speak in favor of or against?
No, sir, no one is in the speaker queue.
Fantastic. Mr. McDowell?
The move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion, move the previous question, Court Colorado.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye, thank you.
Numbers fifty-one and fifty-two are related, so if it pleases this council, you can take them together. The first is the future land use map confirmation for two fifteen Bush River Road to confirm the classification of UCAC three, and fifty-two is the zoning map confirmation at two fifteen Bush River Road to confirm the classification of C three.
All right, we'll take those two together. Is anyone to speak in favor of or against this item, these two items? All right, hearing none, anyone, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
All right.
Sure move, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. McDowell, is there a second?
Second.
All right, no further discussion with the council with the previous question, Court Colorado.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ma, Mayor, before I turn this over to Lee and John, I wanted just to state how absolutely proud and I am of these folks for what you're about to see. I know you all have been involved in the compass during the time that it's been going ahead, and it has exceeded my expectation in many ways, and staff worked tirelessly to get it to where it is, and I just, I, I wanted this to be in person. I'm, I'm a little heartbroken that we can't, or do in person, but I hope these few words vague, again, how proud I am of these folks, so I'll turn it over.
All right.
Great, thank you. This is John, and Lee is on the call with me as well. This afternoon, we're excited to present the final draft of the Columbia Compass Review. This is our ten-year update to the city's comprehensive plan. We'd like to acknowledge many of the city's staff across all of the departments who have helped us put this document together, as well as the incredible support we have had from city council, planning commission, and the community as a whole. I'd also like to specifically thank the planning division and specifically Lee Deforth for coordination, perseverance, and delivery of the plan on schedule. For the brief presentation that follows this evening, Lee and I are recognized that you have seen a lot of this information before, but since it is a public hearing, we wanted to make sure we presented all the information for those who are listening this afternoon. I will be presenting the first half of the presentation, and then Lee, our comprehensive planner, will complete the second half, and we will follow up with any questions you might have. And Lee is gonna forward the slides. All right, public engagement was a critical, what has been critical throughout the Columbia Compass planning process, and we will continue as we move through implementation with community involvement. We estimate over sixty-two hundred points of engagement. This does not include those who were reached via the water bill, mailing, social media, or email subscribers. Most recently, we held two virtual public meetings in late June to provide an update refresher on the comprehensive plan, which was attended by a few people. As you are well aware, the comprehensive plan is made up of nine elements, and I'm going to review those briefly on the following slides. Population, the population element provides an analytical backbone to the plan examining demographic trends and anticipated shifts in needs and desires. Natural resources, chapter provides existing conditions and makes recommendations for programs, policies, and partnerships that will help us move forward to be ready for one hundred, prepare for natural hazards, and more. The economic development section provides information about the Midlands workforce and employers, and makes recommendations regarding the city and the region's economic development efforts. The housing chapter includes a market and policy analysis and a number of recommendations regarding how we should work to meet the housing needs of our community. And the transportation chapter. And the transportation chapter reviews trends, incorporates walk by Columbia and sets forth policy and infrastructure recommendations. And I'm going to turn the slides over to Lee and the presentation.
Thank you, John, and thank you all. So the land use chapter is is mostly carried forward from Plan Columbia, which was adopted in two thousand fourteen, a land use element update. But we've added some additional items there and there are a number of recommendations about things like greenway development and future planning efforts. The cultural resources section, I'm sorry, the community facilities section, jumping ahead, is in many ways a catchall. So when we think about community facilities, we're not just thinking about this.
Losing some audio there. Is it just me?
No.
We lost your audio there.
Lee, can you just repeat the community facilities slide again?
Sorry, I turned up my volume, so hopefully that fixes it. Is this better?
Oh, yeah, perfect.
Okay, it's up. So the community facilities. Chapter really is is a bit of a catchall, so it covers not just facilities, but thinking about. The infrastructure that we provide as a city as well as the services that we provide and how we provide the services. So a lot of those recommendations are tied to that. And the cultural resources chapter is a is partially a partnership with Amplify Columbia, but it reviews not only our arts and our communities, but also our. Our historic resources and our identity as a community and a lot of the recommendations are tied to how we can. Really make our community more vibrant through our persons. And the priority investment chapter is really the meat of the the plan as a whole. It's it's where all the elements are summarized, where all the recommendations are summarized. But it's, I guess, what what I'd really like to draw attention to is that there is a recommendation in the priority investment chapter that isn't anywhere else. And that is a recommendation that we provide some regular reporting on implementation progress for the plan. So we think that's going to be critical moving forward to help keep folks engaged. And I should note that the priority investment chapter also includes a number of priority transportation projects that were fleshed out during the transportation element planning. And so I don't think this is a slide that y'all have seen before, but we do have a one hundred and twenty five recommendations for Columbia Compass and. We can break this down in a number of different ways, by element, by priority, by how long we think it will take up. But but really, there's so much overlap. By land use and community facilities and and economic development all all in one. So we had to put things somewhere, but knew that it's comprehensive and interrelated. And this is a slide that y'all have seen before, but just keeping in mind that the plan organized by element, the recommendations cover a lot of these items here on the screen. But what I really wanted to draw council's attention to tonight is to remind y'all that we've made. Made sure that we've connected each of these recommendations back to the focus areas of Envision Columbia. So we're making sure that. You're able to make that connection as you're moving forward with your strategic planning as well. And we've we've talked about net steps, it seems like for a very long time now, and we're happy to say that our next step is essentially tonight, but really the. Big next step is moving forward with implementation. So we recognize that this is really just a stepping stone to kind of culminate in the planning process, but move forward. We're going to be looking to build partnerships and collaborate with others, even if we have to do it remotely. And and work towards moving forward on implementation and the Amplify Columbia process is also wrapping up and they anticipate coming to you all, I believe, next month to talk a little bit more about that. And just in in closing, I wanted to remind y'all, we and everyone listening, there are a number of ways that folks can use Columbia Compass as a tool and that we hope you'll stay engaged. And so it's not just for council, it's not just for staff and it's not just for citizens, but we hope that. There are ways that y'all can use our annual reporting, following us on social media. You might find out some interesting things about the city. That you that you haven't before that would help you kind of engage on implementation of this plan. So. With that information, I just wanted to say thank you. As as John and Krista have said, y'all have been fantastic supporters of this planning process and. We couldn't do it without council, without without the incredible staff support we've received, but in our department and and citywide, and then, of course, the support of the community. So we really appreciate this opportunity and look forward to getting it going.
All right, thank you very much. You guys have put you guys put so much time and effort into this. I look forward to doing the deep dive into all the recommendations and. Excited about it. Thank you for the very inclusive way in which you've approached it to get some very some significant community participation. So thank you. All right. Go that screen back up. Is any. What for us is there is there is there a motion? I'm sorry, is there? I think we're still in public and are we still in public comment?
Yes.
The citizen input and any citizen input in favor of or against this or any color to this?
There is no one.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
They're moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any council discussion? Just John, Lee. Thank you all, Krista, the whole team. This has been a lot of hard work on putting this and it's. Figure out how we're gonna we're gonna chart the path of future development of this of the city. So I appreciate y'all. With the previous question.
Very proud of them, mayor. I just wanted to add.
Absolutely.
And and Mr. Mayor, if I could add, Lee made the housing presentation, the housing portion, she made a presentation to the Affordable Housing Task Force last week. All of the members were very impressed. They thanked staff for all the hard work, but the comments that I got back were just it it's gonna make. The beginning of our work a lot easier because of the data and the way that staff is presenting it in compass. It'll give us an opportunity to. Really, you know, move our work forward quickly. So thank you and everybody was just utterly impressed, Lee. I have to say, I got so many emails about your presentation.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right, with the previous question, Kirk, call a roll. And that's and you guys, while we have screen sharing, if it's difficult to see the entire. Groups of someone else has something else to say, y'all, 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 y'all jump in, but if not, please call a roll, ma'am clerk.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
You want to be Ed?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, you all will move into a period of appointments. You have the Design Development Review Commission and the Planning Commission.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We have a citizen, Roger Laurie, who says he was he wanted to make comment on the Columbia Compass, was not called.
All right, sure, if he's if he's still online, but what's the procedure, ma'am clerk? Is it star three?
Yes, sir, he would need to press star three.
If he's on the line, Howard, did you instruct him to press star three? And I should open up his line if you can hear me, Mr. Laurie. Star three. And the clerk will make you available to counsel.
We're not seeing Dr. Laurie on the line.
Is that is that Roger Laurie? I'm sorry. I saw I just saw I just saw Roger's email pop up.
I text him back.
Okay, the the essence of of Mr. Laurie's email and I'll forward it to you. Madam clerk, is that the section cultural resources, especially cultural events, does has no mention of the Columbia International Festival in document. And that's. That that seems to be the he goes on for a couple of paragraphs, but that's the essence of of the concern and I'll I'll forward that on to. To our presenters. Now for your consideration. But if we can't get them on, we're gonna we're gonna we're gonna move forward.
He says you could read my email that he sent most of you.
I I I will we're gonna go ahead and incorporate that into the into the. Record is coming to you right now, madam clerk. I think he only sent to me and me and Mr. Rickman, I believe. All right, but that is the essence of of the of the concern. All right, thank you. Let's move into a period of appointments. And there are a couple of items on there again. Just a quick recap, the Beltline Boulevard item, I think we're gonna have to maybe take up on our next meeting if there's some resolution. There, I think we obviously have Mr. Davis's issue. I'm not sure if we need to make sure in the period of motions if we. Direct something to the Community Development Committee. And was there one more item or those the only two? I think those are the only two.
Apple Valley.
Apple Valley, and that's deferred. Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes.
A D D R C, I think Ms. Jenkins has sent updated memo early this morning and. Was she on?
Online too, if you if you all need her, Mayor Benjamin.
All right.
So we, if you looked at the breakdown, District Three has four members, District One has three, District Two has zero.
Which one you and that Daniel? You know, D D R C now, Daniel, or? Okay.
Exactly.
Hey, can you continue, Daniel? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just was, I just wanted everybody to realize, I don't know if you looked at the breakdown, but when I. It was District Three had four members, District One had three members, District Two had no members and District Four had one. So geographically, we need to to look and I don't know from the applicant standpoint. If we need to go back out to try to create some balance, but that that seems awfully lopsided.
Uh, Mr.
Mr. Matt.
You guys, was that you teeing up Mr. McDowell? Mr. McDowell?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Can we can we defer the can we defer this appointment until our next meeting?
Um, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely, and 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 obviously, it's clear, we should endeavor to find some additional representation from districts. Two and now, mind you, there there there's there only in four. We we will be able to see a significant shift. I don't know, but it's not clearly exactly who's rotating off.
Right.
Mr. Bocknights off, he was a District One and. Shell Moore is off, she's District Three. So actually, there are, I guess, as currently stated, there are two from District One. And three from District Three, but there would be a wonderful opportunity to to get some more balance there. Let's 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 endeavor to put a bonus next time around.
Mr. Mayor, I just moved in that we defer this action until our next meeting.
Next meeting? Okay, yes, sir. All right, is there a second? Yeah, Mr. Duval.
My comment is that we're dealing with the Planning Commission, D D R C, and we in September will be dealing with Boza. I think these commissions are the top three of the commissions with the city of council points. And that we should reserve these appointments to people that live inside the city limits. We have a lot of people on the applicant list that do not live in the city limits. And I and I think when we start making these appointments, we need to take into consideration the people that do live in the city.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Could I be in could I be in ban, of course, defer the nominations of each one of these commissions, D D R C and planning commissions for next meeting?
The. Sure, I I would I know that Mr. Rickman was ready to move on Planning Commission, since that's where we have the significant deficit of any representation from District Four. I was prepared to support his his nominee there. Can we hold on D D R C right now, Ed, and and take up Planning Commission and plan to take up D D R C next time around?
Well. I'm sort of I'm sort of sensitive to what Mr. Duval mentioned as opposed to looking at the planning commission. If that person, I'm sorry.
I agree. I agree. I think that I think there's some sensitivity that that historically I've been much more regional in my approach. To this, but but I couldn't agree more. If we're talking about growing the city, we need to give some preference to those who live in the city and and certainly make sure that the. Appointments are balanced out amongst the districts. I couldn't agree more.
So if Mr. Rickman is ready to move on the planning commission, of course, I'll hold steady with deferring D D R C.
Okay, all right, super. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm listening, yes, sir.
How far out are some of the. Roll offs from the committee? Because I I think we I agree if we've kind of off balance on one, we could. Maybe move to not do any reappointments to help create some vacancies.
Well, but yeah, we now, mind you, well, I was talking about some of these commissions, a small number of people, so one or two vacancies is a is a is a very big deal.
Yeah.
But the imbalance on D R C is just striking, so we need to go and get someone from District Two there. It's much more balanced on Planning Commission right now. We got one person from District One, one from District Two, two from District Three, no one from District Four. And one person from outside city limits, believe the person rotating off. Is Del Stegemeier from District Three. If you gotta correct me if I'm wrong, Ashley, without that'll bring us down to. One person from District Three. So I mean, get us get us really balanced. Help me out here, Ashley, make sure I make sure I'm doing this right.
So so, yes, we. We need reps from District Three and District Four from Planning Commission and we receive applications from people in District Three and District Four. But we had several resignations during the COVID, the the early part of the COVID nineteen period, so that's why we're dealing with the vacancies for planning and the same for. From D D R C, but the person that you mentioned is rolling off, Dale is, and then several people resigned.
So we're gonna so we're gonna go we're gonna go ahead and hold D D R C per Mr. McDowell's recommendation. And we can we don't have to move, Sam, looks like we won't have to wait for a bunch of vacancies. We got a bunch of vacancies. If but y'all want some more time to digest some of the other planning commission. Nominations, we have time for that.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Duval.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we have Charlie Torini listed in District Two. That's his office. He actually lives in District Four.
Okay.
He lives in Kings Creek.
Please apparently put his, well, that's must be how he's listed. He's put his work addresses both. All right, well, that well, we're gonna hold on D D R C. For now, we'll take up the next meeting. I think maybe consistent with Mr. McDowell's request, we'll we'll go and. Hold those applications open for another 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 week, a week or so, maybe close another week before next meeting. Is that fine, Ed? All right, and so.
I'm moving the previous question then.
All right, and that's well, that's the whole D R C and then we'll take up. Planning Commission. I should there's a motion. Did you do a Duval and did you did you make the motion in a second or two?
I did.
Okay. I'll say I'll second I'll second your motion.
It's much easier that way.
It is very, it's very efficient. Move the previous question on this holding D D R C, although we're right on the do this do it. All right, move the previous question, Kirk, call a roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
I continue to accept applications for D D R C, Ashley, and and any of you on 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 phone or certainly council. If you have some good recommendations, please encourage folks to to apply and especially those who might be active city residents. Uh, Planning Commission. Mr. Rickman?
I would like to move forth Mason Hart as District Four representative on the Planning Commission.
I'll second that motion. All right. And we can hold on the others until, until next meeting as well? That's right?
Yes.
I would, I would like to, I would like to elect Charlie Torini. I think District Four has got several spots available, and Charlie actually lives in District Four.
But I like, I like, I like Charlie too. So I'll, I'll second that motion as well. So District Four reps will, will move Mason Hart and Charlie Torini. Motion on the first one by Mr. Rickman, a second motion by Mr. Duval, a second. With the previous question, clerk call roll.
Mr. Vernon?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi, Ashley, so would you send out a new memo reflecting the two new appointees? Help us get our heads around who else has resigned and how that changes the balance on there?
Okay, absolutely.
Let's go ahead and also leave the, leave it open for additional applications as well until just before our next meeting. Okay?
Okay, I'll send out those press releases and handle the other items as well. Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, thanks a million. Thanks for your work.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hey, Ashley, will you send us your notice advertising so that we can our email list to make sure that folks are paying attention?
Absolutely, I can do that. I know we did one for the last one. I'll make sure to update it and send it to you all, and I can do that this evening, so you can distribute it. Yes, sir. No problem. You're welcome.
Right, all right, so Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Ashley. Other matters, items.
Thank you, Ms. Teresa.
Council is asked to approve a 25 mile per hour speed limit on select streets in the Rosewood and South Kilborn neighborhoods as requested by the Public Works Department.
Mr. Brennan?
Motion to approve.
Second, any discussion? With the previous question, clerk call roll.
Mr. Vernon?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi, thank you. City Manager?
Item 57, council is asked to approve a four-way stop at the intersection of Wacomont, Kewa as requested by the Public Works Department.
Move for approval.
All right, second, any discussion? With the previous question, clerk call roll.
Mr. Vernon?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi. All right. Let's entertain a motion real quick to have a, a, a full report committing of, of staff and all interested parties before the Economic Community Development Committee regarding Mr. Davis's previously raised concerns around MBE participation. We'll get, we'll get a full report and, and update from staff at the committee meeting. Is that, is that consistent, Mr. Davis, with your previous?
Yeah, we.
Okay, all right.
We've worked with the city managers.
All right, that's good. All right, that's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, with the previous question, clerk call roll.
Mr. Vernon?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Turn your mic on.
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi, hi, thank you. Thank you so much. Now, we're gonna go into a period of public input. We really want to thank the public for sticking through. I mean, the, the summer meetings can sometimes get pretty long, as we have a number of items and putting a bunch of important zoning and planning items before us, but now we have opportunity for public input. I know we have at least a, a good number of calls on the, on the phone right now. Madam Clerk, would you remind everyone of the, of the rules and let's, let's go ahead and, and start there?
Okay, each caller will be allotted three minutes to speak. You'll hear a beep at 30 seconds. And at that time, you should start wrapping up your comments. At this time, we have about six callers on the line and two voicemails that have been left. And so I will start with, it looks like Roger Louie has joined the speaker queue. If you'd like to hear from him at this time.
Yeah, we, we, we'll let Raj come, maybe after everyone else, since everyone's been waiting so long. I will, I will, I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. McDowell?
Yeah, I just wanted to know whether or not, that was item 40 now, whether or not Mr. Shiley was on the line now? Or whether did he come on?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you.
You still wanna hold that, right, Ed?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and we'll have some, obviously, some opportunities, maybe between our next meeting to engage on, 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 on that item. I do, I, I just, I know we're gonna have extensive conversations about law enforcement. And I, and I look forward, I've seen some back and forth emails between citizen leaders and, and city council members. And appreciate the thoughtful in, in civil discussion there. I would be remiss, obviously, as we talk about the incredible, incredibly important role that our law enforcement officers play in, in this community to, to not recognize the service of, of Robert Hall. We, we, we lost him, I just, I guess, just a week ago now, and it's amazing, obviously. All of us don't know every single member of the, of the police department by name, but we do know, we do know Robert Hall. And his incredible dedication, you, you, you know, the, whether it's something as, as seemingly routine as a, as a, as a jog through Columbia or 5K or some of the most incredibly significant and challenging marches or protests that we've had over the last, at least decade that I've been around. He, he always engaged people with a great deal of civility, did his job, did it well, served the people of Columbia well for better than three decades. And we just wanna send our, our sympathies and our love to the Hall family and to his, his friends and family at the Columbia Police Department as well. Didn't want to, didn't miss that moment, so thank you. Madam Clerk, you have a sense as to who's been on the longest, maybe if we can take them in, in, in some type of order. I know several citizens have been waiting a while. Let's, let's go.
Yes, sir. So we have, I believe, William Starrett with the Columbia City Ballet, and I'm going to queue him up now.
Thank you.
William?
Mrs. Derek?
All right, well, we we will move on to the next caller. At this time, I have, I believe, Mrs. Elaine Cooper.
Hey, Elaine? Was it star three, Erica?
Yes.
All right, please.
All right, Mrs. Cooper? I don't know if they've been holding so long that they went on to do something else.
Oh, Elaine wouldn't go anywhere. All right, well, we'll, 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 we'll go back to, to, to both of them. Let's make sure we don't have any technical issues. Let's see who we have next.
Well, let's try Ms. Catherine Davis. Ms. Davis, are you on? Okay, we figured out what the technical problem is, so hold one moment. Okay. All right, I'm gonna go back to Ms. Cooper. Can you hear me now?
Yes, you sure can. Sure can, Elaine. Thank you. Thanks for your patience.
Wow. This is Elaine Cooper. It's been over, it's two hours and eight minutes. I guess that's an improvement from the last time that citizens had to wait over three hours, I guess. But anyways, I am a city resident, a taxpayer, a voter, and a member of the Richland County Black Collective. I have met many of you all, and so, you know, howdy. And so we're here to draw your attention to the fact that we sent all of you an email. And we would like for you to look at that email and to set up meetings with the Richland County Black Collective separately, Steve Benjamin and each city council person. Because we do have a mayor and all the other city council members have equal say. With that said, I just want to introduce us. The Richland County Black Collective is a coalition of community activists that serve as dedicated volunteers that advocate for change within the community while holding all elected officials accountable. Today, we wanted to draw your attention to our purpose, which is police reform policy. In a nutshell, we're asking folks to redirect funds, not defund the police, just to have total clarification as we begin. So basically, I will now refer to the last city council meeting and all that, what had been decided with the budget. We really wanted to address the use of force. We insist that you ban all forms of vascular neck restraint with no exception. That was included, I know, I know they talked about no chokeholds, but allowed a vascular neck restraint. Also, there was a movement to allow rubber bullets and tear gas against citizens. The right to protest, what America is all about. The right to stand in the streets and protest, innocent protesters. Rubber bullets and tear gas are still allowed in our city. We're citizens, we're not a military enemy. Tear gas and rubber bullets are used in a military section. By the way, tear gas and rubber bullets are not allowed against immigrants coming across the border, just, just to let everyone know. But anyways, also, we would like to talk about other, our other situations and concerns. So to summarize, I would like you all to read our emails. Yeah, mine is a request from a member of the Richland County Black Collective in the subject line to read our, our whole document, get back to us for a meeting. My email is ecohillbilly@gmail.com. My phone number is 803-348-0911. And other than that, just speaking of waiting, while we were waiting, I was shocked to hear that anyone would be appointed to any of the, by the, at the city that does not live within the city limits. And that, that we go back to our original thought that the city of Columbia and Richland County should mandate that the police live within the city, live within Richland County. How else can we improve the situation that has, has totally moved the entire nation and the world? The problem with, with everyone is that we're so separated. Why not? It's a win-win situation to have the city of Columbia hire and keep police officers in the city, have them live in the city. And we talked about that in our document, along with talking to Sheriff Lot and encouraging, insisting that he, that he hire and keep officers, once they're hired, that they live within Richland County. So the community can get to know them and they can get to know the community, not at a few cookouts or a few events, but an ongoing basis. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Cooper.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Ms. Cooper. And, and I, and I do want to make sure everyone does know, I, I received maybe at least between eight and 10 emails, the same substance, good substance, worth a dialogue, I look forward to having the dialogue, as I know several of the council members also replied in affirmative, be happy to pull together even a, a, a meeting, and obviously a virtual meeting to discuss some of them. Some of the issues obviously are already addressed in policy or in action by the, by the Columbia Police Department. Some areas, I know the city, the chief of police is already looking at. Some issues are obviously legal issues. I'm not sure you can require a police officer living in the city, but I will tell you, we have a very robust plan that incentivizes that type of activity, because we do think it, it endures to the benefit of the city for all of our employees, not only our, our, our public safety officials to live in the city. But some good content there, some good substance, some things that are already happening, and look forward to that, that dialogue. All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, we are adding Ms. Catherine Davis to the meeting.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Benjamin, and esteemed members of the city council. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, sure can.
This is Catherine Davis. I'm a Columbia, I'm a proud Columbia resident for more decades than I'm going to say publicly, living in a family home that was built in the 1930s. So I am very committed to the well-being of Columbia. I am also calling, I'm, I would like to speak briefly on two things. The first being the proposal for, for a very concentrated law enforcement reform policy in Columbia. We see that, that this is happening very quickly all across the United States as cities and states both recognize the urgency and the importance of making very dramatic changes in the way that we have gotten used to policing our entire country. We have put a very concentrated effort into looking at this, and thank you, Mayor Benjamin, for your kind remarks about what you have seen so far. We do urge you to read it very carefully and consider it in all of its details. We have provided documentation and evidence supporting several of the points that we're asking for. We look forward to meeting you, Mayor Benjamin, and the city council members to discuss this, to bring, bring other concerned citizens in, into the dialogue. And we would like to be placed on the agenda for the city council meeting for the next meeting on August 4th.
Sure.
The second thing is I, I, as, as Mayor Benjamin and council members, you have received an email from me supporting the very strongest, most concerted, concerted efforts that we can make to stem the rapid rise of COVID in our city. We realize the frustrations that we have as a local group when we don't have state support for this. It is extremely frustrating, and so many of us do not understand it. But I will say that we have an indisputable example of success in this country in front of us. And as I said, Mayor Keisha Bottoms in Atlanta has accepted the generous offer of help from that state. I suggest that we do the same.
That's me in the state of New York. That's the state of New York.
Yes, I am. You know, I don't say, I don't say it because so many of us Southerners are so anti-New York, anti-north. It doesn't matter. They've been so successful. I work there. I have many friends who live there. I've been talking to them on a daily basis since the begin, since the beginning of March. And those people, even in New York City, are able to walk around with fairly normal lives. That is the most difficult place in the country to enact this, and they did it.
Let me, I'm a, I'm a relocated Yankee, just like Elaine Cooper. I was born and raised in South Jamaica, Queens, so there's no, there's no. So there's no, there's no aversion to following a good public health policy.
Okay, well, you and I are, are in a minority here, Mayor.
Yes, yes, ma'am. I will, I will say this, a, a time's right up, thank you for both of your very thoughtful emails. And, and we certainly can look at time on the agenda, but I, I, I prefer if we actually had some type of a meeting like this, where we can actually dialogue. Usually, council meetings are places they hear, hear from the public, oftentimes, concerns and protestations, but not really a chance to actually dialogue and maybe even receive a presentation either from you and also get some information back from the police department. We, we, obviously, we, we, we're talking about social distancing on one end, and the other time, we're talking about social cohesion. So let's, let's have a meeting in which we can actually talk back and forth, and, and we'll look forward, I have your emails, and we'll look forward to setting something like that up, okay? All right, thank you, Madam, Madam Clerk? There's a, there must have been a gentleman, young man's on the phone who, who, who came on earlier as well, or Mrs. Darrett's available too, since he was the first one up earlier.
Okay, I'll go back to the gentleman, and I didn't take his name, but I'll go ahead and add him back to the speaker queue now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, everybody, can everybody hear me?
Yes, sure can.
Yes, yes, my name is Emmanuel Afrefa, I am a teacher with Van Richland too. I'm also similar to Mayor Benjamin, a native New Yorker, originally was born and raised in the Bronx of New York.
I'm sorry to hear that, I'm sorry to hear that, but go ahead.
I'm sorry to hear that you're from Queens, but that happens to the best of us. But the most important thing is that I'm also a fan with the Richland County Black Collective in terms of looking at how we could adjust our police policy, in terms of how it impacts our neighborhoods. I've taught in New York, I've taught in Pittsburgh, and now been here, come over here for about three years. And I am very concerned about the state at which my students, in terms of their relationship with the police force. And so, as was echoed earlier, we are very excited to hear from you guys and have a meeting one-on-one with each of you pertaining to your perspective on our proposal. We did hear that there are some items within the proposal that you already may have examined prior. But at the same time, I, we still think it's important to revisit, reinforce, and promote society within Columbia where residents do not live in fear of those who are supposed to protect them. And so, you know, I'm just here to echo on what my fellow concerned citizens have mentioned, Elaine Cooper and Catherine Davis. And we look forward to hearing from you shortly. I also know that you received several emails from us. In terms of like response or emails or schedule of meeting, there is a centralized email account for our group. Know that's the richlandcountydc@gmail.com. I believe you guys should be receiving that email, if you haven't received it before, you should be receiving it shortly. And that will be the best space, the schedule of time for us to meet, especially on Zoom. So, thank you for your time, and again, I'm sorry to hear that you're from Queens, Mayor Benjamin, but you know, what can we do?
We'll give, we'll give, we'll give y'all credit for starting the hip hop, we perfected it, so. No, thank, no, thank y'all.
You guys start making a notch now, I don't get it.
Hey, the, it's, it's so, it's so important to, council decided two meetings ago, and staff has been very deliberate about pulling together a process that will, that will engage the community in a very thoughtful and aggressively inclusive way over the next several months in this discussion about where we go in, 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 on all things, not just on public safety and law enforcement, but, but how we thread this, the spirit of equity and inclusion throughout all the things that we do consistent with our, our envision plan that, that council has adopted and is living every single day. So we look forward to, to those of you who are active leaders in the Richland County Black Collective, playing a role in that discussion as well. So we got, we got some time for that, that will be, like, very soon, very soon, so, but thank you, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Okay, we have William on the line.
Thank you.
Hey, William, sorry for that, but sorry for that earlier, thank you for waiting.
No, no worries, I understand, can get complicated technically. First of all, I just want to sincerely thank you, Mayor, and each council member, our city manager, for the highly commendable manner in which you've managed our COVID-19 pandemic. Your leadership and insight has made me very proud to be a citizen of Columbia. Secondly, even though I understand the tough financial decisions the council has to make in light of the pandemic, I respectfully request that the performing arts not be overlooked in your planning. Celebrating our 60th consecutive season, the Columbia City Ballet has been and continues to be an asset, celebrating 60 years. And it's a, we're an important source of contribution to that age tax revenue stream. We also continue our commitment to diversity through our programming, such as off the wall and onto the stage, Dancing the Art of Jonathan Green, our ballet Emmanuel, our ballet What, What the World Needs Now, and in 2022, we have a new ballet titled Motown. We have also formed a new diversity and inclusion committee at the level of our board of directors. It's chaired by our board member Megan Pickney, and this commitment will, this committee will provide guidance for our diversity and inclusion incentives and initiatives throughout the organization. I implore you, the funds for the Columbia City Ballet at a level equal to minimum of 50% of last year's allocation, it's roughly about $86,000. These funds will allow us to mount our 60th anniversary season and to maintain the employment of our 25 professional dancers and our eight staff members. I want to bring your attention that when this crisis does ultimately end, our city will need to have a viable performing arts organization to attract residents, businesses, and tourists. While the city can retain its vitality if we lose, if we lose a few restaurants and bars, but the city only has one Columbia City Ballet and one South Carolina Philharmonic, and et cetera, you know, other arts groups. It is just important that you continue to invest in these organizations to protect the future of our city. So, we can, I have several plans to be able to do the Nutcracker, several theaters lined up, thinking outside the box in terms of even Sacred Park, we have reserved the fairgrounds, the Cogurt Center, the, as well as the, the Township Auditorium. So we are just desperate to be able to perform our, our 60th anniversary season and to be able to employ our 25 dancers. So we just implore you, please, if, we just really need at least 50% of our funding that we traditionally receive from the city, from our public funding. So, we are.
Thank you, William.
The performing arts is really important, and I just want to stay on your radar, so. And again, I just want to thank all of you, you're doing a great job, and this is a really tough time, but any, any help you can do with our funding, we just really, really desperately need.
Thank, no, thank you, William, I completely understood and registered, appreciate you.
All right, thank you, thank you all so much.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Next up, we have Mr. Abdullah Mustafa.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mustafa. Mr. Mustafa? You checking him, Ms. uh, Ms. Hammond?
Yes, sir, we're trying to get him connected.
Hello, hello.
Hey, there you go, there you go, yes, sir, we got, we hear you, Mr. Mustafa, we hear you.
Okay, okay, how's everyone, Mayor, councilman body? I hope everyone is safe.
Yes, sir.
I want to speak on, on several issues. I'm not going to reiterate what, what my members of the Richland County Black Collective reiterated. But when we meet with the mayor, we like to meet with the city council as a whole. And of course, as you stated, Mayor, we would like to meet, you know, like we do it now, not, as you say, with the city council, which is correct about that. The Columbia Police Department, Quiads and Camps, needs, need some improvement, just like most of the entities, okay? My dear brother, Gray Eye, son, as of today, city councilbody, as Gray Eye stated, no one has been investigated or anything, okay? We're talking about Knowledge Sims, seven-year-old child who was killed, and it's supposed to be gang activity. But no one as of today has been investigated, and that's, that's kind of mind-boggling to me, okay? That's mind-boggling to us, period, okay? So we want some action behind that, okay? At least by now, you know, someone should have by now, you know, been investigated, I would think, but, but not, but not so. There's an issue with a young man, council, who we advocating for. His name is Amir Bagley, B-A-G-L-E-Y. He was terminated from the fire department because of the fact that supposedly, he was allegedly said that he threatened the police department because he made a comment about Joshua Rucker, okay? As we looked into this thing, he was rightfully terminated, and we want, we want the councilbody to look into this, okay? Because again, if the council's about justice, and we are about justice, this young man was rightfully terminated. So we would like for the councilbody as a whole to look into Mr. Bagley, Amir Bagley, was terminated on attempted attempt, allegedly threatened. And again, we have some serious issue with that, because as we look into it, some other things, there was criminal activity by two individuals, had DUIs, but you thought they back at work, but we want some justice for that. But most of all, we want to be able to get community policing, where the police and the community has a relationship. And right now, they don't have a relationship, okay? This is why the Richland County Black Collective is formed, it's a grassroots organization. Everyone is volunteer, and the goal is to hold local officials accountable. Servant leadership is what we're looking for. And Quiads and Camps, I'd be the first to say, the poor and underserved have not been served, has not been served at all. And they're not pleased, and of course, we're not pleased neither. So again, having said that, we're looking forward to the meeting soon, and we'll be waiting. And in conclusion, silent is not an option. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mustafa, I'm not sure who else we have, Madam Clerk, but just in the interest of full disclosure, and some things you just can't leave on the table. The police department has worked very hard and closely with the family in the investigation of the murder of Knowledge Sims. We, we, we hope meaningful trouble lines that will actually lead to community engagement and actually helping solve the crime there, that, that particular crime, the murder of this child, broke the hearts of a lot of folks in this community. But our folks are working hard to solve the crime, and so that's, that's, that, that would be compelling if it were in fact true. So I would sort of make sure I, I address that, that misstatement. The other personnel items, we'll handle those through the processes established and always handle them right. But we look forward nonetheless to continuing community dialogue on all the issues that you raised, sir, as well as those raised by previous callers. Who else we have, Ms. um, Ms. Hammond?
I have an unidentified caller, last four digits ending in 2895, that I'm going to add to the queue now.
All right, please ask the caller to identify himself or herself.
Mr. Mayor, I think, Mr. Duvall, that is hand raised.
I, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't see, I'm sorry, Mr. Duvall.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to second what you said about the case of Knowledge Sims. I know that this is a personal challenge for both the chief and the deputy chief, and that the police department is, is, is focused on finding the shooters in this case. Those shooters are known to the community, and if you're talking about community policing, the community needs to step up and turn in the people that shot Knowledge Sims.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Duvall, thank you. All right, all right, Madam Clerk, this guy, last caller, please?
All right, I'm going to unmute the caller now. Okay, is your number in?
Hello?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Please state your name.
My name is Bailey Butler.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Bailey Butler. I'm a resident of the 29203 area code, Barrow Road specifically. And I'm calling in today to talk to city council and Mayor Benjamin and the city manager about a petition that I started two weeks ago and to eliminate food deserts in Columbia, South Carolina. I know that the city has a council, a food, a food policy comm, council in place to address this issue and has published a report in 2019 regarding the issue at hand. But since the pandemic has begun and hit us hard, there are a lot of things that we need to think about. With 29223, which is specifically Park Lane and Decker Boulevard, that's some of the highest spread we've had in Richland County with COVID-19, and I just really want to think, I want the council to consider that going out to your, to retrieve food every day or going to your convenience store and having to interact with people every day to even get just a snack or something small, because you don't have proper groceries or produce nearby that you can harbor in your refrigerator, is something that contributes to spread. So that is putting these people in these communities, which are the 29223, the 29203, and the 29204, at risk for higher opportunities to contract COVID-19. Also, COVID-19 is impacting our higher education institutions, so USC, Allen Bennett, and Allen and Benedict Colleges. They will have some problems with feeding students this year, because students cannot interact in the cafeteria, there will have to be social distancing. And then also, you have to think about students who live off of campus. So I want the city to consider trying to put more accessible points for students and young families and senior citizens in Columbia to make sure that we have established access and adequate access so that we can reduce spread in Richland County so that we can also reduce spread in the city of Columbia. I appreciate the efforts that have been made by city council so far to reduce said spread. But when people are going hungry and they have to go out frequently, that contributes to the spread. I also would like city council and the people on this call to know that there is also an event hosted by Empower SC next week, July 31st, where you can put, drive up or walk up and receive a box of produce for your household. So I just want everybody to be aware, and the petition that was started two weeks ago has garnered over a thousand signatures. So there are a lot of people in the city and across the nation who are really supportive of eliminating the food desert in Columbia, South Carolina, and I appreciate the time.
Ms. Butler, before you go, I want to thank you, I enjoyed, I enjoyed reading about you, thank you, College of Charleston, a student, is that right? Is that right?
Yes, yes, sir, you've seen me a couple times.
Yes, ma'am, I enjoy, I enjoy reading about you, keep doing what you're doing, love to get you involved with the Food Policy Committee. Obviously, we're hosting, I believe, the Empower SC event at, at the city's Drew Wellness Center. I personally contributed to it, and I think we're going to be pulling together some additional resources to support the, the event. No, certainly challenges that exist in our food systems in the city have only been exacerbated, and that's why the city stepped up its, its efforts, certainly as it relates to food and security among seniors. And I think there's some other innovative ways we can get involved, but we'd love to get more young, bright minds like yours involved in helping shape the future, the present and the future of, of the community, so, so thank you for what you're doing, let's, let's stay, talk to dialogue, okay?
Yes, sir, most definitely, thank you.
All right, thank you, Bailey. Madam Clerk, if we have no one else, we got, I think we got a couple of audios, and we'll let Mr. McDowell speak first, and then I think we have.
We do have two additional callers, that's Lori Domase.
Two more calls have come in?
Yes, sir, well, this young lady was holding, but she didn't understand how to join the speaker queue.
Okay, well, let's hear from Mr. McDowell first, and then we'll, then we'll, we'll, we'll get the, the other callers online, okay, Mr. McDowell?
All right, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, one of the issues that one of the callers called and referenced was the issue of the city employee being terminated. I would think that there were the proper HR procedures and protocol instituted relative to that young man or the employee. That conversation, of course, is an HR conversation. And how do we want to breach that kind of conversation? It's my understanding that the proper protocol was taken care of. Uh, the proper protocol was put in place for perhaps the termination of this employee. Are we correct in saying that?
Yes, sir, Reverend McDowell, it was proper and it was consistent.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, thank you, all right. Um, next, uh, um, caller, Ms. Hammond?
Okay, we have Ms. Donat added to the meeting.
pronounce the name again, please.
Hello, yes, ma'am, please state your name for the record.
Yes, ma'am, my name is Teyana Sadek and I really want to thank you for your patience. Um, I'm here in conjunction with Lori Donat, uh, who's going to be speaking. Um, I'm also here representing the Hiroshima Nagasaki Remembrance Committee. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I would like to affirm what, I'm sorry, I, I think Lori is supposed to go first, uh, is it possible to let her go?
Certainly.
Thank you, I apologize.
Is that possible, Erica?
Uh, yes, they're on the, I thought they were on the call together. Uh, so sorry, yeah, I called in. All right, do you need first to come back to you?
Uh, no, ma'am, she's, she's ready and available. I believe she's the only other caller on here.
Okay. Okay?
Okay. Yes, sir.
Hello, okay, I'm, I am unmuted, good afternoon.
Hey there.
Hello, it's, I'm Lori Donat and I represent the Hiroshima Nagasaki Remembrance Committee of Columbia Friends Meeting as well. Um, and, um, very heart, it's heartening to hear all the work that the city is doing um, and in collaboration with, with so many other parties, um, especially the Richland County Black Collective. Um, I am here today because, uh, July sixteenth marked the first anniversary of Mayor Benjamin's and Columbia City Council's Mayors for Peace Proclamation. And, uh, for those who are unfamiliar, Mayors for Peace, a nonpartisan international network of municipalities registered at the UN, created a peace action plan, which is instrumental to that proclamation. It has two objectives to lead to the goal of world peace, if you remember. The first objective is the realization of a world without nuclear weapons. And the second is the realization of safe and resilient cities. Uh, as the president of Mayors for Peace, Kazumi Mati stated, "We're working first and foremost to abolish nuclear weapons, to protect people from mass destruction and also working hard to equip cities with higher resilience to make them capable to address various issues of their own, such as sustainable development, the refugee crisis, or countering terrorism." By signing the peace proclamation in two thousand nineteen, the city of Columbia recognized that building nuclear weapons is in opposition to creating a more peaceful world and that foremost, the well-being of people is the concern of government. We thank you, Mayor Benjamin and council members, for leading the way toward nuclear nonproliferation, safety and resilience for residents by joining Mayors for Peace and proclaiming Columbia as City for Peace last year. The proclamation is all the more significant in light of the challenges we face in two thousand twenty. Never before have we seen so clearly, I think, the need for resilience within government and community. Never before have we seen so clearly the need for safety along multiple dimensions at the same time. Alongside the COVID nineteen epidemic, the economic downturn, fragile healthcare infrastructure, the erosion of civil liberties and persistent and systematic racial inequality, the breadth of which many in America have begun to understand for the first time, the use of public funds to create new nuclear weapons is also underway. The federal government continues to race to establish the creation of additional triggers in the form of plutonium pits for nuclear weapons at nearby Savannah River site and at Los Alamos. Apart from the unprecedented global risk posed by the active pursuit of new nuclear weapons, Tom Clement's Director of Savannah Riverside Watch, a nonprofit watchdog group, describes plutonium pit production at the Savannah River site as unjustified and provocative, citing prospective costs as well as environmental hazards. The plan to have a production site in our state for the trigger for nuclear weapons should set off alarms that we must work for peace. For over thirty years, Columbia area citizens have recognized that nuclear war would bring about the destruction of our world and many have worked to educate one another and to remember Hiroshima and Nagasaki as well as to say never again. We hope you'll join us socially, uh, Saturday, August eighth at Maine and Blanding to remember the seventy-fifth anniversary of the bombings, to honor the survivors and to stand against proposed production of new triggers, um, for nuclear weapons at SRS. And also, if you can, join us online, August sixth and ninth, um, in observations streaming. You can go to Facebook Hiroshima Remembrance and Visioning Peace Now. And I thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Lori, and they get a, a second speaker?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, thank you so much for your patience, again, I'll be very quick. Um, my name is Teyana Sadek and I'd like to thank you, Mayor Benjamin, and respected council members. I'm here today representing the Hiroshima Nagasaki Remembrance Committee as well. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak and I'd like to affirm what Lori just said, um, to ask for your opposition to the production of plutonium pits at SRS as part of our effort as Mayors for Peace. We'd also like to close with a statement which Dr. King made when he accepted the Nobel Prize in nineteen sixty-four. And I quote, "Sooner or later, all the people of the world will have to discover a way to live together in peace and thereby transform this pounding cosmic elegy into a creative psalm of brotherhood. If this is to be achieved, then man must evolve for all human conflict, a method which rejects revenge and aggression and retaliation. The foundation of such a method is love. I refuse to accept the view that mankind is so tragically bound to the starless midnight of racism and war that the bright daybreak of peace and brotherhood can never become a reality. I refuse to accept the cynical notion that nation after nation must spiral down a militaristic stairway into the hell of thermal nuclear destruction. I believe that unarmed truth and unconditional love will have the final word in reality." End quote. We affirm Dr. King's words and wish for the city of Columbia to work for a world without nuclear weapons. And as a state of state government, Columbia, South Carolina can lead the way out of nuclear war. Thank you again for considering our request and leading the way for peace. You make me very proud to work for peace together as part of our Columbia, South Carolina family. And now is the time to be vigilant and oppose the production of new nuclear weapons components at SRS. Thank you.
Well, before both of you leave, just want to make a quick statement to say that, uh, it's amazing to see the interconnectedness of all the different issues we discuss even today, the issues of, of, of equity and inclusion, racial justice. And if in fact, the world, uh, the world, including this, uh, this great country in which we live, I listened to the Society of Friends, uh, in the seventeenth century and throughout, uh, the most challenging, uh, one hundred years of the, uh, the birth of this country, we'd be in a very different place. Uh, so, uh, I appreciate your continued and consistent leadership, uh, always on the right side of history, so God bless you. All right, Madam, um, Madam Clerk, uh, do we have any other callers? And if, uh, not, um, we, I think we have some audio, uh, um, or recorded, uh, messages that we need to take up before we go to executive session?
Yes, sir.
All right.
So I'll play the first message into the record.
Hi, my name is Lise Chakowski. I play tennis at the Columbia Tennis Center on Whaley Street. It has been closed since the pandemic. It has been shown that the tennis is one of the safest sports to engage in during this time. There is a group of seniors that plays there at, uh, well, two different groups, which total, uh, combined total of about sixty individuals, we're all over the age of sixty. We are now playing in other places that are not as safe because they do not have play courts. Also, there's no shade available. We need to have the center open. The Lori Center is open, bars are open, there's no reason for the tennis center not to be open. Of all the people I play tennis with, not a single one of them are ill. And that's because we do try to engage in regular exercise, even though the city is making it extremely difficult. All of our seniors are very upset by this. I hope that you guys open this, uh, tennis center as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Okay. And one more, Erica, two more?
Yeah, two more. Here's the second one.
Greetings, Mayor Benjamin and all city council men and women. My name is Pastor Abashiba Nig. I'm from Columbia, South Carolina. I am a member and activist of the Richland County Black Collective and my message is to request that Richland County Black Collective will be added to your agenda on August the fourth. And that it's for Richland County Black Collective to be added to, um, the meeting or the agenda on August the fourth. Um, also, we have all, we have emailed, you guys have received the email with our agenda, um, request and asked that you guys, um, decide to read over it and it will be discussed on today. Thank you very much for your time, have a good day.
All right.
Okay, that's our final message.
Hey, uh, my name is Andrew Hudson, my address is three two zero five Lincoln Street here in Columbia. Uh, I've called into other city council meetings before, I apologize, I couldn't, uh, stay online until you got your public comment. I have to run back to my day job. Um, wanted to echo, uh, I know there's other callers who are able to stay on the line and are presenting again a series of, uh, requested policy changes related to policing. Um, the short message I would suggest, uh, to the council is, uh, the amendments that were made previously to the use of force, uh, policy, I believe it's called, are, are not sufficient for what we're talking about, what we're actually looking for really is covered by this idea of defunding the police. We actually want to reduce the amount of money, material and equipment that goes in. There are a number of specific suggestions, uh, in this policy document about how to do that and a number of groups, uh, throughout the Midlands and Columbia have made these suggestions to you. There are things like banning the use of tear gas and other weapons of war, uh, not allowing, uh, our local police and insurance departments to purchase, uh, armored vehicles and other surplus military hardware, requiring to give up the military hardware they already have. Um, and generally to reorient our approach to public safety, uh, around one, uh, that does not favor sending armed officers to resolve every possible situation, uh, but instead focuses on a community care approach and there are lots of other excellent programs, uh, in here, uh, in, uh, Columbia and in the Midlands, uh, which are more deserving of our support than the Columbia Police Department is. Um, one, uh, other just brief notes on the, the format of meetings. Um, this is the, the second or third city council meeting I've attended, you know, this summer since, uh, the protests over the death of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor and others have been so much at the forefront of mind. Um, the city council has made a couple of attempts to address these concerns from the community. I appreciate that. I also want to say I very much respect the city councils, uh, taking, I've done a deal with zoning issues and appointments that all of the business of the city, it really is great. Uh, we have a chance at protests where we say, this is what democracy looks like. And I always want to say, this isn't actually what democracy, this is, democracy is broken when we're in the streets shouting. Democracy should look like, uh, a reasonably ordered city council meeting and I appreciate all of y'all's work on those things. Um, it might be helpful though, when there is so much public interest in matters related to policing and funding, uh, the budget and police department, um, to make some special time, I don't know if that's a special city council meeting just on these so that there's more space for public comment or if it's scheduling the public comment period of the existing city council meetings to be, you know, at a specific time, um, so that folks aren't, aren't getting on. This is the second or third time I've gotten on and waited for several hours through, you know, what's great and important business that you absolutely should deal with, but it's not productive, uh, for me to sit for two hours on hold to leave a short comment about police funding or for you to spend two hours talking about those things, uh, while I'm sitting silently in the background. Um, so, you know, we, we could make a better use of each other's time, uh, both public servants and the public themselves, uh, by making a dedicated space for public comment on these specific issues and whether that's a dedicated part with a time, uh, scheduled in advance as part of a city council meeting or a special city council meeting, uh, either way, I think would be helpful and more productive and very much needed since, uh, there are a lot of us out here asking to talk about these issues. Okay, thank you so much, uh, and have a good day.
We're, we're, um, we're gonna let that one sit right there. Yeah, is there, are there any other, um, uh, calls?
It looks like Mr. Lori is still on the line, sir.
Okay, uh, please put Dr. Lori on and, uh, thank you.
And that would round out this, this session.
All right, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council members. Great to be with y'all. Um, I'm glad to see everyone is looking healthy and great. I've been a Columbia resident at eighteen twenty-seven Green Street for the last almost thirty years, but I've been a resident of Columbia for forty-four years. And I'm glad that y'all got my email, at least somehow, at least one or two bounced back, but I'm gonna send it to you again. I guess I'm going to just talk about the Columbia Compass. I just had a document somebody sent to me, a print document and said, hey, where is the Columbia International Festival in this one? And I thought I would take this opportunity to talk to y'all. I know, I've been in Columbia for forty-four years, the city has grown much internationally, multicultural, multilingual, multiracial, it's unbelievable growth we have seen. And I think, you know, for the future of our city, we need to showcase how diverse we are. Especially we're looking to the next decade to come and then see how the world and then the country can know how cosmopolitan, how international we are. I think the festival basically showcases that diversity we have, rich diversity we have in our city. And primarily, we just think about the population alone in the city of Columbia. I think we may have as many as ten percent and I'm not kidding about that. Just look at USC, Bennett College, Allen, Columbia International University, Midland State. These schools plus K through twelve alone have about easily three thousand internationals. And then you have many working class, business people, healthcare professionals, software guys and a lot of people. So I think we see that everywhere we go, even the restaurants and hotels. I think, you know, it's probably good for the, the Columbia Compass to, some for include the international aspect of our city. I know the great festival has been the oldest one, Columbia International Fest has been there for twenty-five years. And we usually draw about twenty, twenty thousand people representing a hundred and sixty cultures. So I think, you know, if there's a possibility to include that aspect, that would be great. I want to thank Mayor, I know a year ago, when you were in New York City, my daughter came to that conference, you were there. And she was at NYU at that time and then you recognized her name and then you I'm so glad that, you know, you both connected and I appreciate the comments she made last time. But I was not, uh, able to respond to you last time, I want to thank you for, for recognizing her just by the name. So thank you so much, I appreciate all of you, y'all did a great job. I listened to the last three hours of the meeting and I was not bored, I enjoyed listening to every part of it. Because part of being a citizen of Columbia, just listen to what's happening in town also. Thank you for all that you do and I just want to congratulate you for the wonderful job you're doing and thank you again.
Thank you, Raj, you take care. All right, all right, um, uh, can we have a motion to go into executive session? Mr. Duvall, you're on mute, Howard. Howard, you're on mute. Howard, you're on mute. No, you really are on mute.
Got it. Mr. Mayor, I move to go into executive session for receipt of legal advice related to matters covered by Attorney Climate Privilege pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy-eight two COVID nineteen, Business Improvement District Renewal, City Holidays, Streak
Business Improvement District Renewal, City Holidays, Street Renamings, Discussion of Negotiations and Proposed Contractual Arrangements pursuant to 30-4-78 to Automated Metering Infrastructure Proposed Contract Amendment, Landmark Consulting Lamar Companies 207, Gervaisian Location Lease, 2221 Divine Street, Discussion of Employment of Employee Pursuant to 30-4-78 to Municipal Court Development Corporations, Receipt of Legal Advice Related to Appending or Threatened Potential Claim Pursuant to 30-4-78 to Marcus Davis versus City, Darris Hassel versus City.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Another previous question, caller.
Mr. Vernon?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Keep going.
Okay, Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Vines?
Hi.
Mr. David?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi.